Welcome to the Select Board's meeting of February 4th, 2025. Please join the board in a pledge of allegiance.
Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight's meeting of the Plymouth Select Board is taking place in a hybrid format. Members of the public are joining us here in person at Town Hall. Members of the public and presenters may be joining us virtually over the Zoom webinar platform. If you wish to attend this meeting, you may do so by attending physically at the Great Hall here at Town Hall or via the Zoom webinar platform, the login information for which is included on the agenda that is posted on the Town website. Members of the public may also observe the meeting by watching it on Comcast Channel 9 or Verizon Channel 47. Members of the public are also reminded that pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of the Select Board after notifying the Chair, subject to reasonable requirements of the Chair, so as to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting. At the beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any recordings. We are aware of a recording being made by the local scene. We are not presently aware of any other recordings being made.
Thank you. First order of business will be a public hearing. Proof 22, Doing Business As Proof 22, Beetle Lucido Manager, Public Hearing and the Request of the Police Chief Flynn with Proof 22 Incorporated, Doing Business As Proof 22. Regarding the incident that occurred involving a patron of Proof 22 on January 24th, 2025, resulting in police response. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is being held in the Select Board's capacity as the local licensing authority pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 138, Section 34, at the request of Police Chief Dana Flynn. Notice of this public hearing was given to Proof 22 Incorporated, Doing Business As Proof 22 on Thursday, January 30th, 2025, as follows. On February 4th, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the Town Hall in the Great Hall on the second floor, the Select Board will hold a hearing to discuss the incident involving Proof 22 listed below, that being the incident that occurred on January 24th, 2025, with a patron of Proof 22 warranting police intervention as documented in the attached Plymouth Police Report, specifically Incident Response 25 PLY-2481-AR. This incident and allegations, if proven, may constitute grounds for disciplinary action, including warrant, modification, suspension, or revocation of your liquor license.
I now declare the hearing open. Chief Flynn?
Good evening, Chief Dana Flynn. Just a little background while we're here today. On January 23rd, I received notice from the ABCC as a result of some operations they had conducted in downtown Plymouth area, my request, that they were going to be filing or requesting a hearing for violations found at the Proof 22. Their investigation, I can't talk about, I won't talk about, or the findings of investigation. On the very next day, on the 24th of January, we responded to an incident wherein a patron, intoxicated patron, was removed from the Proof 22. And as a result of him being removed, he was not too happy with being removed and ended up damaging property at a next-door business. He smashed out a window. So based upon notification from the ABCC and the incident we had on the 24th, I felt that it coming upon me to notify the town manager of the incidents so they could properly notify, so he could notify the licensing authority. I have Officer Robin Hale here with me tonight, in case you have any questions for her. But I have the incident report from that evening, which I did present to Town Council, and I'm not sure if you have copies of it with you.
We have it, yeah. Any questions or comments at this point for the Chief? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Chief. So Chief, well, first of all, I would say we should enter into the record the notice of the hearing that was submitted on January 29th or thereabouts, that's in our packet, January 29th, 2025. And then we've been provided, as the Chief discussed in his opening, the incident report written by Officer Robin Hale dated 25 PLY-2481-AR. I'd ask that those be entered into the record. But Chief, are you aware of other recent police responses to the Proof 22 business?
We've had a number of responses to Proof 22 over the past year, not all of them relating to their operation of their business. Some they had known as a landmark that when I dispatched, it would receive calls. They'll be plugged in just as a locus for our tracking purposes. However, I do have six reports of note that speak to the level of intoxication of patrons in their bars upon our responses. Yes.
And so those would be the level of intoxication of patrons while they're operating as a bar arrest?
Correct.
Okay. And could you read the police incident report numbers for those?
Sure. The first one is 24-4724. And that's an incident from February 18th of 2024.
And did that result in any criminal charges or?
This one did not, but there were some, this was an allegation of a drink being tampered with by a female patron. But I think the investigation proved not to be, not to be true or not to be founded.
Okay.
But during the course of the investigation, there were some concerning statements made by witnesses and staff regarding the reporting party's level of intoxication
Okay.
in continuing service while in Proof 22.
All right. And could you read off the next police report incident number and then describe, as you just did with the last one, the gist of what was detailed in that report?
This one is 24-4759. It happened to be the same day. We would dispatch to a disturbance. And obviously, the intoxicated male party was seen walking away from the disturbance. He ultimately, because of his level of intoxication, he fell and struck his head on the brick sidewalk. And the investigation revealed that this individual was showing signs of high level intoxication while inside the bar, including spilling his drinks and dropping his glasses onto the floor.
Okay. You could go to the next report and read the incident number and describe it again?
This one is 24-16089. This one involved a female patron who was allowed to return inside the bar or inside of Proof 22 after closing to use the ladies' room. She refused to leave. Officers report the female was very clearly highly intoxicated, extremely unstable on her feet, bloodshot and glassy eyes, and her speech was extremely slurred. Again, the manager at the time had identified this female as a patron who was allowed to return to use the ladies' room.
Thank you. And could we move on to the next?
This one is 24-37180. It involved a fight between two patrons where the officer described, the officers as both were very intoxicated. And he noted that several times in his report.
Okay. And the next, which I think would be the fifth?
This had to do with a male party trying to using, gotten an altercation with these door staff. Officers reported that the involved party had a moderate order of alcoholic beverage come from his breath, unsettling his feet, salivating heavily, and had bloodshot eyes. This individual had somehow, was able to gain access through an employee-only door and was found in the kitchen area.
Okay.
Then the last incident was from this year, 252481, what we're here for today. Where in this report, Officer Hale reports the individual be highly, appeared to be intoxicated, swinging back and forth, speaking in slurred speech, speaking with staff there. They also reported that the individual was intoxicated.
Okay. And that's, that's the incident report that
Yes, sir.
we're primarily here for? So, and in that report, the individual is described to responding officers as a patron of the bar, correct?
So Officers Hale reports that through dispatch, that advised a patron of Proof 22 had been escorted out by the staff. He later became assaulted and punched out a window.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. I have, I have no further questions at this time.
Anyone else have questions? Mr. Blitzer?
Chief, thank you. First of all, I want to start off with thank you for bringing this to our attention. I asked you, you know, there was an article a little few months back from the internet media outlets that wrote an article with kind of a catchy headline, I'll leave it at that, which wasn't too flattering for our downtown. It made it seem like at night, our downtown is like the Wild West. And I didn't think it was a very fair article, but it really painted a picture. And at that point, I get calls from several landlords. They asked me, what's going on? What are you doing about some of these bars and some of the activity? That's when we talked and I spoke to you about, you know, we can't do anything about any of these problems if it's not brought to our attention. And that's why I think you're doing this and I appreciate what you're doing. So my only concern now is that everybody gets a fair hearing and I just, I have some questions because, you know, I read this report and I'm going to wait till here from the other side, what they, the questions they're going to ask you and stuff and what their side of it, because I have a lot of questions for them too. But all this, these incidents you're talking about, that people were noticeably intoxicated, you have, your department has the right, you have, you can write bars up for this, these activities, right?
We have, we report to you. We report to the board.
But you can't give violations?
No.
Okay. Okay. So before this hearing, have you ever submitted anything to us?
There was another establishment downtown.
But nothing from this particular?
Not under this ownership, no. Not in my time.
And I don't want to ask too many questions because I'm sure that they're going to ask a lot of the same things I'm concerned about. So we're not concerning ourselves with the past right now. We're concerned because we really can't at this point. We're concerning ourselves with what happened that night. At this point.
Well, it just, yes. Yeah, I reported that one incident from the Yeah, I just reported the incident from the 24th based upon the notification the previous day from ABCC about their investigation.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Costa, do you want to say anything?
For the record, Attorney Alan Costa here for Proof 22. For the record, Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, we have here Paul Tupa, one of the co-owners, and Jordan Henderson, who was the head of security. He was there the night of this incident, January, and appears you're going to be showing the video. He is, he will be seen on the video. If I could enter into the record, please, an incident report. This is an internal report used by Proof 22, was filled out by one of the managers on duty. If I could, please.
Mr. Costa, Attorney Costa?
Yes.
Before you show the video, is this video, is it timestamped?
Yes.
We can tell when it started?
Thank you, Selectman Blitzer. Yes, this, it's a little hard to see. This is a cell phone video of the monitor showing the security video. I believe it begins at the hours of 22:18 in the evening, and that shows the gentleman in question, the patron in question, either when he comes in or just shortly after he comes in. And it basically ends four minutes later at 22:22 when he's escorted out the front door. So he's in the establishment for four minutes in total. Two items before we see the video, please. Because this is a cell phone video of the monitor showing the security video, there's a little chatter in the back, so we could play that with no sound, please. The second item is the patron in question. You'll see him wearing a red top and he has a light colored hood coming out the back. And I think it'll be obvious when you see him. Mr. Chairman, if you wish, we could play the video of that.
Video.
Lying and me were in trouble.
Thank you. Got it? That's him coming in? Friend's got two drinks, he was probably going to try and give him one.
That's security approaching him there. I was incorrect.
No.
Another friend is.
They're going to sit.
That wouldn't look right. There we go. There we go, here.
Right on it.
And he goes right through the, to the front door at this point, there it is. And he doesn't really start the trouble until he gets kind of to the door and then outside of the door. So we see from the video approximately four minutes of activity with him inside. I could have testimony here, but the testimony would be that he was never served. As soon as they thought he was acting a little loud and inappropriate, he was approached, as you saw, asked to leave. He followed security right to the front door. It was the Proof 22 personnel who called the police because he was starting to get a little physical with the door staff as he was going outside, making a little bit of a racket, and they called the police. It's our position that I think that the, the conduct of the Proof 22 staff that night was actually more than appropriate, was actually exemplary. I mean, within a couple of minutes, they noticed his behavior was a little inappropriate and they approached him, asked him to leave, escorted him out. When he started to get a little rough, that, and that's not on the camera, but it's in the police report, they did not escalate the situation. They called police. Police came and handled the situation from there. So our position is I really don't see a violation. This only happened in the course of about four minutes from what we see here. And that's what we would offer.
I can go anytime, so.
Attorney Costa?
Yes, sir.
You've seen the incident report at issue, 25 PLY-2481-AR?
I have, yes.
So you see that the report in the first, as detailed in the first paragraph, is described as dispatched, was advised that a patron of Proof 22 had been escorted out by staff. So a patron would be someone that, in colloquial terms, is being served by a business of this type. So it's described that way in the police report, continue?
Well, Selectman Canty, I respectfully disagree. I think a patron could refer to any customer or person inside the establishment, just the generic description of a patron. I don't think a patron comes along with it the definition of being served alcohol.
But you adopted the definition of a customer of the establishment in your self-described definition just there as well?
That's, that's a general description of someone being inside. So I, it does not mean he was served anything, whether it was food, alcohol.
So how did he get inside if he was, if the story of the establishment is that he was intoxicated prior to ever entering? Shouldn't he have not been able to enter the building envelope?
You know, I would say it would have been nice, you're right, if perhaps they had identified that as soon as he came in, for whatever reason it wasn't. But I would say that it was caught very quickly afterwards. And just within minutes, it was determined that he was inappropriate to be in there and escorted out.
But he did, while he was in there, even in the brief moments that we saw in this video, which you provided?
Correct.
He did consume some alcohol in the establishment?
Well, it appears that he, a friend of his offered him a drink and he took a quick sip. And I would note that security was over to him within seconds after that.
Correct. I have no further questions at this time?
Thank you.
Mr. Costa, can you, can you do a quick review or maybe the owner can do a review of the, the protocols or the training that staff goes through at Proof 22 with respect to alcohol?
Selectman Mahoney, would you like Mr. Tupa to do that?
Sure, yeah.
Paul Tupa, partner, Proof 22. We go through tip certified, so they have to be, everybody's got to be tip certified so they know how to, how much to serve, who to serve, checking IDs. We also do serve safe training as well. So, and all the bartenders are trained at least, I have one bar manager here right now, I would say she trains every new bartender that comes in. Before they can start, they have to be tip certified, five training shifts as well. So we do that as well as Jordan, who works the front door and head of the security. They check IDs. We have a scanner that checks IDs. We have a lot of protocols in place. They do sweeps on move all the time to check to make sure people, if they're intoxicated or trying, getting to that point, that we stop and get them water, food, and all the basics that we, that we need to cover.
Is de-escalation part of the training in today's world?
Yes, very much so. It's, it's always a point to
Is that, is that when you're referring to, I mean, if you identify someone in this state, you might pull them aside and offer them food or a non-alcoholic beverage?
Yes, we constantly tell our bartenders to not push people right out the door to either serve water or do that. If we're serving them and you see them starting to get to the red level, out of the yellow level, and be like, okay, have some water, have some food, even if we have to purchase it ourselves or comp it, whatever, we would do that for the customers.
Okay, thank you.
So what, what time did he come in? It was like four, I mean, 10?
Twenty-two, eight, 10:18. And he was out by
The incident report is 10:25, so that seems to be accurate.
Yeah, so then he was escorted out, and like Jordan said, then we called the police, notifying them because he caused damage. So, I mean, in reality, I mean, yeah, I mean, we're trying to do the best thing. We're trying to stop something from happening.
So can I just ask one question of your security, if I could? And then I'm going to ask Officer Hale a couple of questions.
Who are you? Jordan Henderson?
The particular night, obviously, an intoxicated patron, we know now, there's no denying from the report, it entered the establishment. And you recall, did you, did he get by somebody and then, then once he get in, you realized that, you were watching him because he was intoxicated? Is that how that went down?
Yeah, so it's hard to tell right away, every time, like how intoxicated somebody is.
Because one thing we all saw on the video was as soon as he put a drink, security was right on him.
Yes.
So, and I thought that was good. He got by you and, you know, that's, you can't change how that happened. So I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Officer Hale, can I? So Officer Hale, I got your report in front of me here and this is fair and accurate of everything that happened.
Yes.
And you were a very good officer, I know that, so my experience with you. So what I'm reading here, if I can read this, I see that a gentleman, and you already heard that, we saw the video, he entered Proof. We saw that he was, the list of that video is accurate, which I believe it to be. I'm not sure if he took a sip and he was taken right out. When, when you got to him, you interviewed, you interviewed, I'm not going to say the defendant's name and I'm not going to say the witness's name, but the employees and the witness's friend both corroborated the story that, that he got aggressive and then he took off.
Correct.
Okay? Left the scene, smashed the window, and then they called 911, 911, and called the police.
Correct.
And you guys took it from there?
Yes.
Did anybody ask the question, anybody ask where he was before he went to Proof 22?
He was with EMS for a while. I'm not sure if they asked that. I didn't ask him where he was beforehand. I was talking to the staff and then
And I'm glad that we're here tonight for this. And I think any incident like this could be reported to us so we can, you know, get a hold on this stuff before it does become the Wild West. the Wild West. So I commend you, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Costa, would you come back up? The incident report form that you handed out to us, the internal report that was submitted by an employee of the establishment, was it, is this signed by Joyce Lynn? Is, was she...
Yes, the signature, Selectman Golden, is down on the bottom left. I believe that's her signature, and she uses her last initial, not her last name.
So she was there that night?
Yeah, okay, I presume so, but yes, I'm getting it from...
Is Joyce Lynn in the room right now?
No.
So, just to be clear, this form, for the folks at home, this form indicates that the patron was not served that evening. Do you know if he ordered any drinks?
That I don't know. If I may defer to...
If you could just tell us who you are and...
Thanks, I'm Megan Capola. I'm the bar manager. So he physically, you can't really tell on the video, but it's right before I started recording. We tried to get the whole camera view, so you could see him physically enter and leave. He walks in like 20 seconds before this all takes place. If you physically watch him, he comes over to the bar for 10 seconds. He's just standing outside the bar. Nobody ever goes over to him, and then he goes right over to the table with his friends. So none of the bar staff actually even interacted with this man, never once said hello, never got him anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
More questions or comments?
So, at a minimum, I think, the individual, if, and I do, I understand we saw a video, but it's a snippet of a larger video, and I don't, I don't know for a fact that there's no other information about this patron in there, because we're being provided by the establishment. So it could be the whole time he was in there, it could not be, I don't know. What I see in the video is the individual in the, in the establishment, in a state that appears to be, I agree with the assessment of aggressive and visibly intoxicated, but that makes me, at a minimum, question how he was able to enter into the building, if he did in fact enter into the building, as was shown on this particular video, and that's the sum total of it. So I think, and I'm basing my decision not based on any of the other incidents that may have happened, but rather just what was shown on the video and reported in their own documentation, as well as in the incident report 2481, where bouncers describe to the police the individual as a patron of the establishment. I think at a minimum, the establishment should have additional training for its security staff, so that, because, if that is the story and the sum total of it, if this individual were to get into a car and hit someone, or cause an accident, get in trouble himself, it would certainly reflect poorly on Proof 22. It would be a problem in the community as well, obviously. And it's something that could, could have went a very different, different way. And I don't know if he was at some other establishment downtown before this, then perhaps they should have handled him differently. We don't know what establishment that was, or if he was there. I have, I don't have any of that information. What I have before me is Proof 22 that, at a minimum, played a part in what happened at this gentleman's evening, and that led to this police response, and was concerning enough for the chief of police to bring it to our attention. So, to me, at a minimum, that is something I would want to see. There's other things, like, that we could do as well, as we're aware, but at a minimum, that is something I would want to see.
I'm just gonna comment, and Kevin touched on a few things, because my concern was, when somebody's out like that, had he not punched the window, I'm assuming he punched the window, was he just gonna get in his car and drive down Route 3, or anywhere, and hit somebody? That was, I mean, comment I was gonna make here. And what is the policy that, when you see somebody like that, before they punch the window, let's say he didn't punch the window, so he just waddles on his merry way? I mean, if you talk about training, I think you need some training in, when that happens, when you call the police, that it doesn't go any further than that. I mean, this, this individual, in my eyes, what I saw with that clip was not being too able to walk, never mind drive, or whatever. How he got there, I don't know. I wasn't there, but... And the second comment would be that you have failure in the entrance to your building, and I usually, I don't visit there, because I don't get downtown much, but it's something that you need to, to have somebody at that front door. And for whatever reason, you didn't, because he got in, regardless of how long he was there for. So I'm definitely on, I'll let go, Mr. Cante, with at least the training, and I'd like to see some probation. And we're not gonna go back any incidents, or things that could be, but that way there, we have you on notice as to try to correct these problems, and just hope that you watch, and, you know, watch the front door better. And I, I get it. You might have got called to go do something else. It could have been a little scuffle somewhere, but that post is really important, you know, to stop stuff like this, and it don't, makes it better for all of us, including the guys that own it, and the bartenders, and the managers, and, you know, but... And I would say the same, no matter who was sitting in here, and, you know, as long as the violation was similar to this, it would be the same. It's not your establishment, it would be the same. It was across the street, down the street, in North Plymouth, up at the shops at five, it'd be the same. We have to send a message, because we don't want it to be the OK Corral, or the Wild West, whatever you might want to call it, because it's really not. And we, you know, I'm not going to just, you know, say, okay, you know, don't let it happen again. I think it needs to be at least some probation and some training. The very minimal. And I think that that's very fair, but, of course, there's five of us here, so I don't know what we're gonna say, but... And watch the front door better, if that's how it seems to be that he got in there. You know, and if somebody's like that, I wouldn't even let him out in the street, you know, myself. I'd call 911 and let the men and women in the public safety come down and handle it, or he hurt somebody else. That's my biggest concern, to get in a car and, or a vehicle, and, you know. And there's been a lot of other things going on around there that probably has something to do with your establishment, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, we have to pay attention to what's happening down there. And, you know, it was Mr. Flutzer here that actually asked the police department to notify us of these situations, so that's why we're all here tonight.
I'd just like to speak, first of all, I'd like to clear something up. I have 45-plus years in the restaurant bar business, so I have a lot of experience. And I can just tell you, the responsibility that goes with owning, managing, working, serving liquor, it's such a huge responsibility. I've seen people go to jail for serving intoxicated people. There's, there's, there's a lot at stake, and most people in this business take this very, very serious. So, what happened, I know what happened that night, because I've seen this scenario 100 times or more in my 45 years. You had an intoxicated person that get in the door, for whatever reason, you know, and I'm not gonna, you know, whatever happened, they get in the door. Once they're in the door, they're a customer, they're a patron, whether you serve them or not. When you call the police, you, I got a customer that, you know, that's, that's what you say when you call them. You know, you don't say some homeless guy off the street, or, you know. So that's where that customer patron come in. But I've seen it. What happened is the gentleman get in, security, because it didn't even look like it was that busy. Security noticed them, because on the video, you saw him dotting around. I mean, it's the first thing I noticed, he's dotting around the room. So they're watching him. And I can tell you, it's what you do once you have somebody in that situation. It's how you handle it. So, as soon as the drink went to his, he was talking to people. So, right at that point, he wasn't bothering anybody, because he knew the people. It's very obvious, you could see that. As soon as the drink went to his lips, within seconds, the, again, the word bouncer, we don't use that word bouncer. That's not a word that you use. You know, it's security, because that's not, I'm sure the lawyers don't like that word bouncer, because that means hands-on, roughing somebody up. So, security was right over, took the gentleman out, out the door. I didn't see any aggression. In fact, the other door guy stepped back in. Only one guy went out with him. Maybe a second guy might have followed to watch. So, and then, I take it from there, I go with Officer Hill's report about what, not only what the staff told her, happened, and, and, and his friend, and I won't say his name, but his close friend. I'll tell you how close the friend is. He's the one that told him that he was the aggressor, and then he ran, just like the employee said, he took off. So at that point, when they take off, they called nine, they called 911, because you can't tackle somebody, hold them against their will. That's illegal to do. You can't do that. You call the police. And what I see is they did that. So, as far as the violations going, I, I just think that did everything correct. Now, I'll tell you how close this kid, the witness is, the friend of the defendant, he actually bailed him out. So, and, and, and he could have said, oh, the doorman roughed me up, that roughed him up, and he didn't say that. He, he corroborated the doorman's stories and the manager's stories. So, what I see here is, it happens. It gets in, and it becomes your headache. It's happened to me in nice places. It's happened to me in barrooms. It, it doesn't discriminate. Somebody intoxicated, they don't, it doesn't discriminate where they act up, okay? It happens. So, my recommendation, number one, I would, I would have a no trespass for this gentleman, and, and I think the bars ought to get together and have a no-serve list. I said that years ago, when I was managing, managed down at a place on Main Street in 1998, and I wanted to have a no-serve list back then. And I've said it after that, a couple other places. If somebody acts up like he did, he caused a problem. And so, have a no-serve list, so he can't come back and do it to another establishment. Your, your security, you know, and what I, what I saw is they handled it right. But, have a, have a meeting, you guys have four places, call a meeting of all your security, and tell how important it is to pay attention to somebody coming in your door. Look what happened tonight, you know. And, and all the bars and restaurants in, in town should, should be unnoticed, that this behavior is not gonna be tolerated. If, if incidents happen, and look what happened. There was an incident down the street. Didn't happen in your place, but yes, you could have, you, you, you're being held responsible for it. So it's, it's very serious stuff, the ramifications. And it's very easy to tell your staff, look what happened tonight. I don't want that to happen again. So, so I don't see a violation. I, I know this, I didn't know about the bad behavior in the past. Obviously, they're unnoticed if they come before us again for something like this. Then, then we've had this meeting, they've been warned, but it's hard right now for me to do anything, because I don't see, I, I, first of all, I, he was not served in the restaurant, so I don't know how the violation of being over-served, I don't know how that's gonna stick, how that would stick. So, but, I wanna be fair, I, I just say, Mr. Tooper and your partner, just let your people know, you know. And I'm glad you had video, and everybody should have video, because it backed up everything you said, and everything that Officer Hill said in this report right here. It, it, it's, it all backed everything up, what the witnesses said. So, my recommendation, that you get some training for your security, and, and I think that, I think that should be enough at this point, so, okay, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Cante?
Just ask the respondents if they had anything else that they wanted to add, or if they were satisfied that all the evidence they wanted to be considered has already been entered into the record.
Thank you, Selectman Cante. We have nothing further to add, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I may be overruling, pardon me.
I've owned some restaurants for about 20 years now, and we've always looked, Peter and I both had places in the city, and now Plymouth's kind of our home. Is there any way, you guys keep saying training and stuff like that, but there's no guidelines for training. And I've always asked, why don't we sit with the police department, they come down, or we sit and actually get a committee or something together to train all bar staff like that?
And if you wait for the motion, that's probably what you're gonna hear.
I mean, it's just, it's common sense in that, I mean, we just, I've always asked for it. In Boston, they always tell me they didn't have the resources for it. And I said, you do, because I see Detective Malvi once a week. So you're telling me, once a week, we could have training staff for all the doormen across all of Boston, things like that. But same thing, smaller scale here, obviously, but, like I said, we don't want it to be the Wild West, because it hurts our business, insurance, everything, everything through the roof, but we, I mean, I think it would be a great thing for all of us to, if we had training like that.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, is, is that something that you could work with the establishment on? Maybe just some of your community resource officers could work with them on some kind of protocol, or...
Absolutely not.
Training?
I'm not gonna take on that liability, of training any private business, how to conduct themselves.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cante?
But they do, I mean, we can require that they produce an updated security plan for our review and approval within a 14-day period, as part of our, our findings, if we choose to do that. And I would... I would just ask that the respondent's video be entered into the record, and, just for the formal process.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Now to clear the hearing closed, bring it back to the board.
I would make a motion that we require the establishment to provide an updated security plan, be submitted to the town, within 14 days.
I'll second.
You'll second? Okay. Discussion?
For discussion, would it be better if we talked to the 45 license holders in downtown, and maybe come up with a plan that everybody could adhere to? Maybe some kind of a training that everybody could take part in, instead of just doing one, how about let's train all the businesses?
They're not all before us with a potential.
I'm just saying, it's something that they would voluntarily agree to. They could, there's a downtown waterfront district business association that they could probably bring it up, and maybe agree to come up with a plan. And some of the suggestions I made tonight about a no-serve list, about the troublemakers, the bad behavior people, don't serve them. Maybe they can come up with a plan.
I think respectfully, that's outside the scope of the current hearing. Requiring all license holders to do something like that is outside the notice and depth of this particular hearing with this particular license.
Well, with a license commission, we could, we could require it.
Not without giving the other, we can't require it just arbitrarily of these other license holders that haven't done anything different or incorrect.
I'm not an attorney, but I'm not sure, as license commission is, Attorney McCabe, you know the answer to that?
Good evening. The answer...
Uh, the answer to whether or not you can just issue a blanket requirement for all establishments?
So everybody has, is the same training?
I, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I, I'm inclined to think the same way that Selectman Canty is, which is that they would at least probably need notice. And I'm not sure that they would have had that at this point. I'm happy to look into it. I'm happy to inquire, but I, I wouldn't have that answer off the top of my head.
Right. I'm just trying to, I don't, whatever happens tonight. But I'm, I'm trying to prevent other businesses going through what we're going through tonight. That's all. So, and I'd like to be consistent so everybody knows, knows what the plan is.
Understood. If, if the board would like, I can look into it. I would just ask if, if you'd like me to do that, let me know.
Well, we'll save that for another time.
Thank you.
You made a motion, correct?
I did.
So I'll second that motion. And we can keep having discussion. I, I'm not going to support your, your motion, Mr. Canty. Because I would support it if it was what you basically said, but with a six month probation period. Um, if you were willing to do that, then I would be willing to. And if not, I so respect you for, and the rest of the board. But I think that a six month probation period with the record we have um, only shows us that, you know, they're going to really try. And, and that's what we really want. We, that's all we're asking.
Would you could make a motion to amend my main motion to include a probationary period?
I'd like to amend Mr. Canty's motion to add six months probation, um, moving forward.
Would that be, uh, held, holding their license in abeyance for a period of time for, basically hanging over their head for that six month period?
Well, I mean, if they were to violate, make, have a violation, we'd have to see what that was. And then we could, you know, then we'd have to discuss it. But I mean, the next thing I would look at was, uh, limiting the hours.
Okay.
Downward. So i- if there was violations similar to this in the six months.
Okay. Uh, I think based on some of the guidance we received, we would need to have, um, is that they're procedurally, anytime they have a violation, we can bring them back for the hearing. But if they had, say, a three day, we've seen ABCC do this with some other license holders.
Right.
They have a three day suspension held over their head for a year, two years. Um, so I think if we're going to hold them on probation beyond just being a licensee in the community, we would need a definite period of suspended time hanging over their head, whether that's three days or whatever for that six months. That if they violate again, they're going to lose their license for three days, whatever the period within that six months. So is that part of your motion?
Yes, it is.
Is it?
For three days.
For three days?
Right. And, and within the 90 days.
Within the, within the?
I mean, the six months.
Six months, within the 180 days? Okay. I would, uh, second your amendment, my motion.
Mr. Golden?
Um, so just to be clear, that if this were to pass, we would be requiring a new security plan within 14 days? We would be holding their license in abeyance with the possibility of a three day suspension should an additional violation happen?
Within six months.
Within six months.
Okay. I, I think that's a bit heavy handed for the, um, the particular alleged violation that's in front of us. Um, I think we're all concerned about, uh, some of the activity that's happening in our downtown area, particularly, um, at nighttime, on weekends, things like that. Um, I think what we're discussing right now, though, isn't, is an overcorrection for a licensee that, um, at least through video, uh, testimony from our police, testimony from, uh, the staff, it hasn't demonstrated that it warrants that level of, um, punishment. Um, I, I think, I think the, the proprietor is going to work on some kind of training for his, his team. Uh, I'm, I'm disappointed, but I understand the chief's position on, uh, whether or not the police could be involved. Perhaps what you could do, uh, is to come up with your new security plan and simply discuss it with our, with our law enforcement officers. Not, not for the purposes of, um, receiving their endorsement or any kind of training for them, but just to let them know that you've, you've taken some steps towards that. Uh, so I, I, I don't think I can support this motion, certainly as it's been amended.
It hasn't been amended yet. Motion to amend.
Shall it be amended?
Okay.
Using my expertise and experience, I, I can't vote for this. I don't find a violation. And at the next downtown business meeting, which I, I attend, I'm going to bring up to all of the businesses, uh, anybody that has a license, a liquor license, that we come up with a plan, uh, a, a security plan, some training, uh, voluntarily. Uh, and, and everybody will be on notice of what, that we're not going to tolerate bad behavior in a downtown waterfront, actually, in any liquor establishment. But what I saw tonight, using my experience, or what I, I listened to testimony from both sides, uh, I watched the video, I, I use my experience, I've seen that scenario hundreds of times. People getting in there intoxicated that did not get served. And unfortunately, uh, it become your problem. And it's how you handle it. And I saw how they handled it. He took a sip, they took him out, he took off before they could, and, and he broke a window after he took off from them. They called the police, which is what the responsibility is. So I don't see a violation. So I, I can't vote for any kind of, uh, discipline. Thank you.
So with all due respect and your expertise, it was you that actually asked the police department to come in with these violations?
Exactly.
What exactly is the purpose of this?
They come in and they have a hearing, just like any criminal, you have a hearing. And, uh, and I find them not guilty. How's that? So it's, that's what our job is.
That's what we're doing.
That's what happens when you go before a license board. They, they don't, not all violations are found.
Okay.
So, and I found them not responsible. I know people think it's funny, but it's serious. So.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so I, well, I find myself aligning, um, with the two individuals to your left on this one. I'm not an expert in this field, but I, I think we know that the stereotype is that, you know, years ago, a couple of burly individuals would have picked this individual up and thrown him out on the sidewalk, and that would have been the solution. And, you know, I know that in today's world, and Paul was talking about it, and that the training is de-escalation, and that, that's part of it. So, you know, what I saw tonight on this, um, incident, uh, there were some positives here. I can't get into details on how this individual, um, accessed the facility. Uh, no one's perfect. Um, I believe that Mr. Costa will take his client, they will go back and they will, you know, revisit their protocols. And, um, again, this board, this board has the ability to have them in here any Tuesday night or on a Sunday morning if we so choose with 48 hours' notice. So, um, we always have that ability. Um, you know, um, they're, they've been warned, they understand what's going on. And, um, I, I think they're going to take this and, uh, turn it into a positive and using it as a learning experience. And hopefully just, uh, again, um, bring their staff in, uh, revisit what their current protocols are. And hopefully, um, you know, um, episodes like this are either completely eliminated or minimized moving forward.
Mr. Canty?
So just procedurally, so the main motion prior to the amendment being made, find them in violation and require a 14 day, within 14 days, them to update their security plan submitted to the town. We're debating currently whether to amend that motion to include the probationary period. So the first vote would be on whether to amend it or not. And whether it's amended or not, we'd have the main motion. I just, we're going back and forth to make sure.
Thank you. Mr. Golden, how do you vote on the motion to amend?
Uh, no.
Mr. Bletzer?
No.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Myself, yes. Now on the main motion, which was, Mr. Canty?
To find them in violation and to require them to submit an updated security plan to the town, uh, within 14 days.
Second?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Bletzer?
No.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
And myself, yes. 3-2, 3-2. Thank you. Next is licenses. We have two. Have a motion or questions?
Unless my colleagues have questions on the licenses, I would make a motion to take the two listed licenses as a group.
Second?
Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Administrative notes, 1 through 5?
Unless my colleagues have any questions, Mr. Chairman, or comments, I would take, make a motion to take administrative notes 1 through 5 as a group.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Bletzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. First on the agenda is update on the activities for the Fourth of July. Welcome, Mr. Tavarez.
Uh, Matt Tavarez, uh, July 4th Plymouth Committee. Um, thank you. Um, so thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board for allowing the Fourth of July Committee, um, to come in and, uh, for a few moments to address kind of 2025. Um, as you know, for over 40 years, the July 4th Plymouth Committee, a nonprofit uh, made up of a small group of volunteers, has fundraised and organized a parade, fireworks, and even added a 5K in the morning with our race management partner for our residents to celebrate America's independence. We have begun the 2025 permitting process with the town for all of our events for July 4th. And those are moving through the appropriate channels at this point. We will soon set up our meeting with local safety officials, the town manager's office, and various departments that work directly with us to deliver a wonderful day for our residents. Uh, this year, we plan to hold all three of our annual events. And the Philharmonic is planning on their annual concert on the waterfront. It will all be centered around our theme for this year of Let Freedom Ring. Parade registration will be opening soon via our website, july4plymouth.com. And we will make the opening day announcement on that registration opening through our social media channels. The 5K registration will be opening up, uh, online soon as well. So everyone can start training, including all five of you. Um, so, uh, our fundraising goal for this year is, uh, up from last year. As we all know, everything in this world is going up. Um, it, it's $130,000. Um, and we appreciate in advance, uh, the annual help, uh, hopefully from the visitor's service board, PGDC, the town manager's office, uh, to help kick off our fundraising. Uh, but that is only a portion of our fundraising puzzle. We continue to rely heavily on our local businesses and residents, uh, to, to assist in the balance. Uh, we wanted to let the public know this evening that our donations page is live on our website and is ready to accept donations, no donation is too small or too large. Um, we will be back before you throughout the upcoming five months, as we usually do, um, prior to the Fourth, uh, to update you on the specifics of the day and its logistics. Tonight, though, um, the July 4th Committee and some members are here, uh, present with me, um, would like to inform the select board, um, that the nonprofit will be dissolving and disbanding after the 2025 festivities. This has been a difficult decision by the committee to come to. All five members take great pride in having created a special day for 41 years that we are proud of. We have taken pride in our working relationship with our police, fire, and DPW departments, just to name a few. Those relationships were never taken lightly, and the sense of collaboration was never lost on us. As is often said around town, we are one town, one Plymouth. The members of this committee at this point are moving on to other areas of interest, be it personally or professionally. And the time needed for this endeavor is harder for us all to be able to accommodate. The committee has begun the process of reaching out to local organizations that may be willing to take on some or all of the annual festivities of the fireworks and the parade. Our race management partner is committed to, to us to continue handling that event over the, hopefully, many years to come. We suspect that some of these groups that we have reached out to may have trepidation of going it alone. But I want to assure you that the members of this committee have all vowed that we would be a helping and guiding hand for the next organization and that we wouldn't just be running away. Because as we, as I stated before, we're one town and one Plymouth. Um, and with that, um, I'm sure may or may not be comments here, so.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Tavarez, thank you for joining us here tonight. Um, first of all, thank you for all of your many years and, and your family's many years' service uh, to the community in this regard.
Um, if you, thank you. Uh, if you allow me, I'd, I'd like to just name off those members of the committee just so that they get the recognition. Uh, we have Jeff Metcalf here, uh, with us, who you'll see over the next five months as well. Again, we're not running away this year or anything. Um, we have Anne Marie Winchester, uh, who handles a lot of our logistical operation, particularly with the state, um, and the state park, uh, because we use a lot of that, um, area. Um, we also have Jad Osmansky, uh, who drives a lot of the, the, the volunteers that we get and, uh, helps with local outreach and fundraising. Um, and then we have Mark Wells, our treasurer, um, who always makes sure everything, particularly in the nonprofit world, I couldn't begin to tell you what you need to do for financial, uh, packages. And he has handled that, I think, since inception. Of course, um, I'd be remiss without mentioning Kent Tavarez, um, my father. He, um, started this all when, I say 41 years ago, but I'm going off of the incorporated documents. It was, that would have, that would have put me at about six years old. And I know it started before then. Um, and, uh, you know, I appreciate, um, his hard work, um, his vision. He has been the one that's consistently stayed as members have come and gone. Um, he has even stayed on the last couple of years where we've tried to say, it's okay. You can, you can, we can handle it. Um, he's left a good legacy. Um, I think even maybe his grandson could probably take on the reins if he wanted to. Um, but, uh, the, all five of the, uh, uh, those four members, um, they, the hours that they put in, um, to, to take on something like this, um, is not lost on me. And I know it's not lost on the board, so thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Obviously, uh, concluding after this year is unfortunate timing with the nation's 250th, uh, anniversary celebration coming up.
Sure.
Uh, the following year. Um, I would really hate to see this tradition, uh, leave our town. So I'm going to volunteer myself, um, in any capacity. Um, and I hope that we can, um, support from the town side as well to make sure that this continues to move forward, even as you folks move on to other, um, other aspects of your lives.
Sure. And, and, and like I said, there's not a single one of us that, this is just, it's kind of the natural progression of things sometimes. Um, but not a single one of us said, as soon as 2025 is done, July 5th, 2025, I don't want to hear from anybody. It's absolutely not the intent of this committee. Um, I don't think, I think, you know, you have a former selectman, another former selectman. Um, you have two town meeting members that sit on that board and a local business owner. And, um, we all understand the importance of this town and this community. So, um, it's not a, a cut and run, if you will. So I, I'll, I'll, I'll.
I'll be in touch soon.
I will hand over the folder to you.
Sign him up. Matt, I just want to thank you, Matt. I, I know what you do. I see it firsthand, uh, your father, you know, Jeff, uh, it's, it's invaluable. Uh, you know, if you don't realize how big this parade is, the year we didn't have it a few years back, and it was devastating for the town. So, uh, uh, I know you're still going to be around. You're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
But thank you, and Ken, thank you for your leadership, getting this thing going, so.
Mr. Mahoney?
So, I'm guessing, Matthew, that this falls, this could fall under the heading of, you know, all things eventually come to pass, all good things come to pass, eventually, something to that effect. You know, it's an honor to sit on the select board in this community, and it's an honor to lead the Fourth of July parade in this community. And I never really, over the years, I never really got to spend that time in the parade with your father, even though we served a significant amount of time together on this board, because he was always the point person for this event. And I know, I believe, last year, I'm guessing you spent some time on the parade course with us, Ken, you know, for the first time since I had pretty much been involved, and, you know, I was happy for that to happen. To Matt's point, I know this has probably been going on since the mid to late 70s. You know, you're talking about the official, when the nonprofit was created. Your efforts, Ken, and, you know, and the supporters around you, has been, you know, enormous with respect to making sure that this event went on every year, especially those fireworks for this community, because that's what this community deserved, you know, given, you know, its singular standing in the history of this country. You know, I'm disappointed, but I understand. I'm glad you're not running for the hills. This is something that we need to be proactive on, so that we make sure that we get into '26, and there's no, there is something there to ensure continuity, and that is imperative that that happens. So, I commend Mr. Golden for stepping up immediately. I'll also make myself available in whatever, you know, form that might, may take, but, you know, I can't thank you, your father, and, you know, Anne Marie, and Mr. Metcalf, and the others enough for their contributions to the community over the last five decades.
Mr. Canty?
So, Matt, and to the rest of the committee, I agree with the sentiments that have already been expressed, although I will not bore everyone by repeating them. But I will say, this is a, this is the kind of job that the public tends to have an expectation that things will go off flawlessly, and you rarely get credit when that occurs, but there's very little turnaround if something goes awry, such as if it's cloudy one day, or it's raining, and a decision has to be made that people from the comfort of their homes don't have to have a.
I prefer to remember the sunny days, so.
Yes, right. Well, hopefully, we all will, but, you know, life is not full of just sunny days, or events that go exactly as we would like. But, you know, I think over the years, you've gotten less credit and more blame than you probably deserved, so I hope that going forward, you get, and in your memories, you have all the credit you deserve, and less of the blame, considering you did not earn it.
We appreciate that. We do, you know, we do, because it's been going on for so long, and actually, this current makeup, oh, it's probably been together, the current makeup has been at least 10 years, if not longer. So, it is, you know, it's personal, and, you know, not to be cliche, but it is kind of like your baby, right? You know, and so, actually, to your point and to the public, I can understand frustration. I can understand when something doesn't go right. But to let them know that there's actually nobody that's harder on the committee than ourselves when something like that happens, so we, it's not that we, it falls on deaf ears. It's just, unfortunately, things happen.
Well, I think, too, it is a statement to the reliability of the committee over the years, that people have been able to take the brand. Because if you weren't as consistent as you were, then people wouldn't have that ability.
Sure, that's right.
Because of the routine way in which it was delivered, people had the privilege of just assuming that it would always be perfect, despite the imperfections that are inherent.
I would like to echo what everybody else has said. Naturally, a great thank you. And I have a small idea of what goes into that, doing smaller things, but that's a big one. And I want to say thank you for coming to, you know, upstairs and letting Derek and myself know that this day was coming. I appreciate that. It gave us some time to throw it around, which brought Derek and I to many conversations of an event planner, if you will. And the reason being, I knew this day would definitely come sometime, whether it's this organization or Thanksgiving, and I'm not putting anything out there about Thanksgiving, but the reason I touch on those two is because those are the two events that people in this town really, really enjoy, and as well as a bunch of others, and it's good for the economy. So, to bring you up to speed, and maybe I shouldn't, but I'm going to anyway, we brought this up at the foundation meetings, an event planner, however, it hasn't all been figured out yet, but there's been some talk of some money being approved, you know, seed money to get it going, to have paid position, and now it's going down, you know, other paths of, you know, events throughout the year. So, I mean, like, I think we should do something with our first night. I think we should do something, you know, expand off of Brewster Gardens and along the waterfront and downtown. But that's just my own thing, so I definitely know, and I also know you offered to help and do it one more year, which, you know, that says a lot, but I don't need to say that to the Tavarez family. I think you put your heart and soul, and it was your dad's words to me on Isaac, so I'm in the first election I won, said, never be afraid to say you love the town. And ever since he said that to me, I say it freely all the time, because we all do. So, I'll probably reach out to you a little bit more as we progress and try to figure out what the foundation and the event planner, if it comes to futurism, but I'm going to say 94% it's there. It went for the board. We voted, you know, first year startup money, but I don't know where it's going to go from there, if it's going to be successful. But I'm sure we'll be leaning on you or reaching out to you as to how to do this and how to do that, because nobody knows better than yourselves how that all happens.
You have my word and my guarantee that.
I know that.
We will be there, so.
And Ken, thank you very much. I mean it. We all do. Thank you.
It's been a little dusty around the Tavarez household for a number of months here, so not easy conversation.
Great. So, we'll be reaching out, and we'll be having some more conversations, but thank you.
And you'll see me, we're just five months away tonight, so.
Okay, Matt. Thank you. No Place for Hate Committee appointment, one, two-year term. Sophie Speliopoulos, I'm sorry if I mispronounced it.
Hi. I'm Sophie Speliopoulos, is how you pronounce it.
Pretty close.
Yep, not bad. I've certainly heard worse.
So, why would you like to serve on this committee?
So, I moved to Plymouth in June of 2023, and I have decided that I want to be more involved in the community, and I thought that this would be a great way to do it. I have a lot of experience from college in DEI involvement, diversity, equity, inclusion, and I thought that this was a great committee to try to join and to put myself out there and help out my community a little.
Awesome. Any questions? Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Mr. Quintle. See, it's not just the difficult names sometimes.
True.
So, Ms. Speliopoulos, is there anything in particular that the No Place for Hate Committee is doing that you'd like to see them continue, were to be, were you to be appointed, or anything that they're not doing that you're aware of that you'd like to see them do?
Yeah, so I have been to one of their meetings so far, and that meeting dealt a lot with antisemitism, which I think is a really important issue, so I'd love to see them continue to deal with that issue. Also, my experience, particularly from college, I was the president of an organization called the Sexuality and Gender Alliance, so most of my experience has been with the LGBTQ community, and especially recently, I have found that transgender individuals have been under a lot of, a lot of stress, just based on recent political changes and the administration changes and things like that, so I would love to see more effort put towards the transgender community specifically from the No Place for Hate Committee.
All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for board members? Do you have any motion?
I would make a motion to appoint Ms. Speliopoulos to the vacant two-year term.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Mahoney. Discussion? Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Recycling Committee, Mr. Downey?
Good evening, and thank you for having me. For the record, my name is James Downey, the Assistant DPW Director, and I'm here tonight to bring to your attention for consideration a request for establishing the Recycling Committee. The Recycling Committee's mission would be to promote reuse, increase recycling and composting, educate the public on how to reduce waste, and positively impact related core issues. The committee would look to achieve these goals by serving as a resource and advocate helping residents, the school, other institutions, and visitors to understand and reduce their environmental impact and keep Plymouth beautiful. The committee would work directly with town officials to improve the solid waste and recycling programs in a cost-effective and easy-to-implement matter. The committee would function in an advisory capacity and will not have any regulatory enforcement authority. That's all I have, and I'm here to answer any questions. And I'd also like to mention, for the record, there are other interested people here tonight, if you might have any questions for me or them.
Mr. Canty?
So, James, thanks for coming, as always. So, I can see a value in the community in having a recycling, I know that there are other, had several conversations over the last couple of days with a close friend of mine, whose opinion I value, about the potential benefits of a recycling committee in Plymouth, and needless to say, those conversations were sufficiently persuasive as to the individual merits, despite the fact that I am generally somewhat reticent, we seem to be adding boards and committees in this community at a breath-taking pace at sometimes to solve every individual problem that may come up. But I know that this is the type of committee that has succeeded in other communities, and we've had it in the past year as well. Part of my concern with the, though, with adding the committees that we add, is that it also takes up a lot of our time vetting people for all of these individual tasks, and there are other things that the select board can sometimes better spend its time on than just appointing people to other boards and committees, because as we saw earlier tonight, there are many other things within our jurisdiction and responsibilities as well. So, given that this is a request from the DPW, I guess that's a long way of getting out, that I would, I would like to see if, if we did get applicants for this position, we determined tonight how many people we wanted to be on the committee. Could the DPW vet the candidates that come in and the applications that come in, and then provide us with a slate of individuals that apply that the DPW believes would be, at least out of this initial batch, best suited to accomplishing the mission that you're seeking to achieve, so that we could, we could appoint in that scenario, based on your expertise, and I think you're going to know better who would be able to do this than we would, but we could appoint that in an admin note, as opposed to, we've had some recent appointments, interviews that have taken a few hours. So, is that, is that something that the DPW could assist with?
I think that would be a reasonable request, and I would find that beneficial as well, so I would agree.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
How many members you think should be on the committee?
Well, I think a committee like this, unless James has a different opinion, I was thinking you could have nine members. You want to have, you got to have an odd number. If you had nine, you could have three-year overlapping terms, so people's, the first three that applied, based that met the criteria, would get a three-year term. The second three that were qualified would get a two-year term, that would then be a three-year term upon reappointment, if they were to be reappointed. And then the last three would be a one-year term that would turn into a three-year term when it expired, or they would be reappointed. But I'm open to being, to it being five members or seven.
See what applies.
Right, but I, I think a goal of nine, that's enough people to get stuff done, but not so much that you can't get anything done, you know?
Sure, yeah. No, I would, I have no objections to that. I think originally, we were thinking five, which would be an odd number, but I'd be open to nine as well.
Okay. Do you want, do you have a preference, since we're asking you to staff it?
I mean, maybe we could see how many applicants we get, and that may come into consideration.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Blitzer?
I think if you're going to vet it, we should leave it up to you, how many people, and I think you may want to talk to your boss out there, he's shaking his head a little bit, on the number, the number. You might want less than nine, but, but as far as I'm concerned, I'll leave it up to you, whatever you come back with.
So, we need to make a motion to authorize Mr. Downey to.
I would make a motion to authorize the reestablishment of the Recycling Committee with the specific number of positions to be determined by the DPW and the vetting process for the initial batch of applicants at a minimum to be accomplished by the DPW.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion? Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Pennard, Waste Water Superintendent. I'm joined tonight by the town's water and sewer engineer, Kendrick Mynne, and Nathaniel Michael from Weston and Sampson, to update the select board on our current CWMP project. Nathan has a small presentation for the select board. Part of the presentation tonight is also to discuss a citizen advisory committee for this project, the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan, like CWMP. We are available to discuss where we are currently in the project, what's coming up in the project, and also anything to do with the citizens advisory committee.
Hi, I'm Nathan Michael with Weston and Sampson, and we are helping the town with the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan. So, this will be talking about tonight, basically just explaining what a CWMP, the process, some of the, why the town has embarked on this planning project, where we currently stand, and then how a citizens advisory committee would contribute to this process. So, a comprehensive waste water management plan, or a CWMP, is a roadmap for wastewater management, and the project area is not just the town sewer system, but the entire, entire town as a whole. And this is just a simplified outline of what a CWMP is. We basically summarize the existing wastewater conditions, we summarize the future wastewater conditions. the future wastewater conditions, we use that information to develop wastewater management, sorry, future wastewater needs. Then we develop different wastewater management alternatives on how to solve those needs. And then we collect all that information, all that data, and we get input from different stakeholders to select, to select a recommended plan. And that plan typically is, goes out with about 20 years, is what this report will end up encompassing. Some of the drivers of the project, from the town's standpoint, was continued compliance with their regulatory requirements, analyzing localized versus centralized wastewater options, defining the need for public sewer expansion for continued environmental protection, just understanding the condition of their existing wastewater system. Plymouth being a coastal community, there's a growing focus on resiliency. So the wastewater system resiliency is part, part of this plan. And then engage, engage the public, get an understanding of the town's needs from multiple stakeholders. And finally, obviously, this plan needs to be financially sustainable over that 20-year period. Some of the challenges for Plymouth, only 87% of the town, 87% of the town is not on town sewer. Therefore, a lot of the project, a lot of this, this planning is actually more centered on the unsuwered areas of town. The town has unique village areas in various parts of town, so how do we address their needs if connection to the centralized system is not feasible? Protection of Plymouth's many natural resources, continued permit compliance, both current and future, and also integration with ongoing planning projects. Plymouth has multiple planning projects going on currently, including the master plan. So we need to keep an open communication with these other teams. And this is just the stack, kind of a status of the project. We've reviewed available previous studies and developed the summary of existing conditions, the future conditions. This included site visits to all the assets in town, pump stations, the plant. We developed preliminary future flows. And currently, we're using this information to develop the wastewater needs, and we're currently getting input on those needs. The needs include things like system improvements. That could be collection system improvements, like infiltration inflow needs, plant upgrades, improvements. And it also includes unsuwered needs areas. And this is just, just an example of a general needs area and things we look for. So, you know, we take, we take an area, unsuwered area of town, how many total connections are there currently? How many, how many could be potential in the future? Are there any septic variances, septic issues, average lot size, soil conditions, flooding concerns in an area? Are there any sensitive environmental areas in, in, in that particular needs area? So we take all that into account, we look at their zoning. And then after we review, we screen alternatives on how to handle the needs. Does the area stay on onsite, onsite systems? Do we connect to the existing sewer, if possible? Or are there other local or regional treatment options available to be evaluated?
So, Mr. Mahoney?
Can you go back to the, you want me to save this to the end, or you want to, so have you done an analysis on that area there? And I'm looking at the purple and the brown and the green to the left. Do you have data on that one now, or that's something you're looking at?
We're looking at that, yeah.
You haven't come to any?
Conclusions, no. So that's roughly where we stand. And now we're requesting an establishment of a Citizens Advisory Committee. And we're hoping that the role of this committee will be to provide perspective, participate in the discussions of the wastewater issues, support prioritization of the needs, and the development of the recommendations, and most importantly, foster communication with others about the wastewater issues that we discuss with neighbors, family. So, in summary, the committee will help guide decision-making so that the CWMP best meets Plymouth's goals. And then the next steps is obviously where analyzing those alternatives that will lead into a recommended plan. That plan, we then create an implementation plan, a finance plan, and then the committee would be involved throughout this process. That's pretty much it.
Mr. Canty?
As I alluded to prior to creating the other committee, we love creating committees to achieve very specific niche goals whenever something comes up. So, we have a Citizens Advisory Committee related to groundwater discharge in the community, and my understanding is that that particular one is going to have a finite lifestyle. I think one of my colleagues is blessed by the opportunity to chair that particular committee. I have the privilege recently of, of chairing a Citizens Advisory Panel for Nuclear Decommissioning, which is even more fun than it sounds to say. But I guess, is this something that could wait, for example, until after the Groundwater Discharge Committee is complete? And if not, I'd really like to know why we need yet another in a seemingly endless parade of boards and committees.
I would love to answer that question for you, Mr. Canty. So, the CWMP process is pretty well-defined by DEP of what they're looking for, and public involvement is hugely critical as part of this process. So that's why we're looking for this committee in particular for this. Also, the timeframe of this, we have the funding now, they're under contract for this. So if we push this out another year, we're just pushing out the timeframe of the contract that we're currently under. And there's also a financial aspect of the planning that's associated with this. So any project that's identified under this, you're just pushing out another year, another year of cost. And was there one more question that I missed?
Well, I, I guess, there's no way we could combine. I don't, I don't want to put this on Mr. Golden's plate, but I, without speaking to him, but I guess, is there any way we could, we have so many of these.
I understand completely. I would highly recommend we do not combine the committees. That other committee is looking at one particular aspect of the sewer system and discharge, and this is more of a very broad, town-wide project.
Yeah.
So we do want input from other areas of town on this committee, rather than those that are isolated over that.
Okay. Now, I meant, I see in the documents that were presented that you would like another member of the Select Board that toss their hat into this particular ring. I think two of those hats are well-spoken for, for, I think, one Citizens Advisory Panel or Committee is, in my experience, more than enough. But is there, could we not have a member of the Select Board? Because the more, the more boards and committees we are on as well, the less time we're spending doing the other things at the board.
That is an option. I do think we would like someone from the Select Board to provide input on the process, though, because it is a town-wide planning project. I don't necessarily think they need to chair the committee, but maybe attend.
Well, that would, how about if we had something to contribute? The meetings would be public, and we could come.
I guess.
No, I was just going to have a question for you after this was done. If that's okay with the chairman.
So you're saying you would like to hold public meetings? Well, I mean, we're planning to do public, larger input gathering sessions.
Right.
As part of this as well. So you would like a Select Board member to attend those, rather than be on this committee?
If a Select Board member has something to contribute, then absolutely. But I think that
Sure.
Currently, the Select Board has a number of assignments that come with being a Select Board member. And the more of them that we add on, the less the Select Board is focusing on some other things, and there's an opportunity cost. In the more things that we take on, the less of some other things we can do. And there is a cost benefit there.
I am not opposed to not having a Select Board member chair the committee, if that is the case. We can move forward without that.
All right. I appreciate that. And I, I guess I, I know Mr. Golden has some things to add. I'm, I'm still reticent to continue adding boards and committees, but I will continue to hear what people have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have spoken with Doug prior to this meeting as a selectman who was interested in this particular committee. I believe that the work that we're doing on the groundwater wastewater discharge committee, Citizens Advisory Committee, is related, but not, I would agree with Kendra that we should, we shouldn't be combining those committees. I would like to see a broader, a broader mandate for the Comprehensive Wastewater Master Planning Committee. I, I would say that the timing of this committee would, I, I think perhaps line up with the conclusion of our work for the Groundwater Wastewater Discharge Group. We are, we're coming to the end of our presentations. The, the mandate for us is to endorse or not endorse the EIR, and then to make a recommendation to this board whether or not we'll pursue a change in our permit. I believe that those things could align such that it wouldn't be a heavy lift for even me to serve as that particular person. So, I hear your concerns, Mr. Canty, I share them with the, the number of committees that we're putting into, into place here. But I think this one's super-important for the community. That has implications for everything, environmental, economic development, everything that we do here. So, I do think there's value in having a selectman present. Although, I think that the Assistant Town Manager also may have something to say on the matter. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to him.
Through the chair, if it's okay. I'll keep my comments brief, but I have a quick question for Kendra. In order to be eligible for state revolving funds for sewer projects, don't we have, as a community, to have a CWMP in place, approved by DEP?
Yeah, there's, if there's projects that are identified as part of the CWMP that we want to pursue, it needs to go through this process for those state funding.
So in order to implement sewer plants, or not necessarily sewer plants, but projects related to wastewater discharge, whether it be Title V assistance, or extension of the sewer that comes out of the CWMP, we do have to have a CWMP approved by DEP. And a component of that process to get the CWMP approved would be to have this committee, correct?
Yeah, the committee is highly recommended as part of the public process through DEP and MEPA for this.
So the importance of the committee is it would allow us to access SRF funds in the future for implementation projects. And the second thing I would say is, you know, as a way to assist, since I've been out of the DPW engineering game for a long time, I wouldn't mind dipping my toes into it again. So if the Select Board would like to consider me as part of the committee, or as an alternate, I would be gladly, I would gladly join.
You must be a mind reader. I leaned over to Mr. Canty and said, how about sending staff?
We will also be at these meetings, Doug and I both. So there won't be no staff involvement in these meetings either.
I would certainly be open to designating Mr. Jeneo as the chairman, but also serving it as a liaison from the Select Board as well.
Motion by Mr. Golden, second by Mr. Blitzer. Discussion?
Do we want to establish the committee first?
Well, I didn't make the motion.
I didn't make the motion.
You make a motion, I gotta, I gotta go through with it. Would you like to withdraw the motion for now?
Oh, I, yes, I certainly.
All right.
Mr. Canty? Has the Planning Board been approached about whether they would, like, this is, because this is a planning process and related to the development and growth of the community as well as serve its existing footprint. So it seems like it's within their, you know, realm in many ways. Have, have they been asked if they would like to have a member serve on this committee?
We have not asked the board. We have been in close communication with the Planning Department to make sure that we're discussing status of this versus the master plan. But we haven't approached the board to see if they would like to have a member on that. We were planning to invite them to stakeholder meetings, but not necessarily on this committee. But we can approach them if that's something that you would like us to do.
I think it, their talents would line up with this, or also, to my knowledge, not currently on any Citizens Advisory. So, maybe something that they feel left out of. And I'd hate for them to have that experience.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no further questions from my colleagues, I will make a motion to establish the Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan Committee.
Before I second, are there any provisions to the establishment, such as eliminating the provision that a Select Board member serve and chair it, or adding Mr. Jeneo to the committee, or inviting a Planning Board member to attend, or to be on the committee?
I will incorporate all of those suggestions into my motion.
All right. So I would, I would second a motion to establish the committee, to remove the requirement that a Select Board member participate on it and chair it, and to invite Mr. Jeneo to serve on it, if he were to apply. And also to have one of the seats, if the Planning Board is interested, be designated for a member of the Planning Board.
Or they designate.
Or they designate, if they want a member of planning staff instead. That's fine.
Okay. Chris?
So moved.
And second?
Second. Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Absolutely.
I, I'm, I'm very happy to serve as one of the members. Should, you still want a selectman to be involved?
We will not turn it down if you're offering.
So this, if I may, just a gentleman there from Weston and Sampson. This is a study to also go out into the, well, after the committee comes back, for expansion of the wastewater facility, or construction of a new one. I guess what I'm asking you is, when do we get into West Plymouth with some wastewater? And the reason I ask it is because I'm being told by our Planning Department many times that the worst thing for our aquifer is, is the, the septic waste and people's septic systems, especially around the ponds and, and whatnot. So, I know how big the town is, but is there a certain area that you, you'd be focusing on, or is this just going to be the whole town?
The, the project is the whole town, but the, yeah, that we develop, so far, we've developed a handful of needs.
Prioritized areas?
Needs areas that we, yeah, prioritize, but we haven't, you know, came to a conclusion on any of those yet. We're still on the alternatives. But, yeah, West Plymouth is obviously one of the needs areas.
And how long do you think this might be for Kendra? The committee will actually be formed and come back to us with recommendations?
So our hope is to submit the CWMP by the end of this year. So it'll probably be a year-long committee, and...
That's, that's a good answer. Thank you. I like that. Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, could I ask a couple of follow-up questions? So, predominantly, the focus of the committee, with the support of the professional staff, is to identify areas of opportunity for incremental sewage, you know, systems, infrastructure?
Yes and no. So that is one component of this. Depending on what their analysis shows, it could be, we recommend this area do advanced nitrogen removal systems. We recommend this area have tie-in to the existing treatment plant. We recommend this area collaborates with a satellite private system. There's a lot of different options that this commit, the committee is going to help dissect with the help of with the help of the professional team that we have established. They will provide their input based off of their experiences of where they are in town, what their concerns are, and help rank all of these alternatives. That will then be developed into a recommended plan over a 20-year planning period.
And you're going to analyze the entire town, or the 87% that is not currently under town sewer? And you'll have a list of every area that could potentially be an opportunity for an alternative plan to currently what's going on, which is, you know, septic cesspools in those areas?
I wouldn't necessarily say every area, but the high priority areas in town.
Three to six?
Oh, yes. At least. Potentially more. It depends on what their analysis comes back. We're just not there yet.
I guess my concern is that you're going to come up with these five to 10 geographical areas. You're going to work with this committee, and they're going to determine with your support what the best path is forward for said geographical area. So I guess, I just, I believe if this process moves forward, there should be periodic updates to this board. And you can see that there's probably going to be some philosophical, some tough decisions with a couple of these areas that are going to be very sensitive. And, you know, similar to what this current committee that Mr. Golden's on is dealing with. Philosophically, which direction do you go in? And I just, I don't want to put that entire determination on a volunteer committee. So I just think that this board should be getting...
So it almost sounds like someone from the Select Board should chair the committee?
Yeah, John.
So, 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 I, there just needs to be updates every three to four months. I'm not, I wouldn't rule out, obviously, participating in the committee and...
Sure.
You understand what I'm trying to say?
I understand what you're saying. The updates, I don't necessarily know if it's every three to four months. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer for them to come up with...
Okay, six months.
Yeah, something, when we, there's something that's a little more definitive and defined, absolutely, before any decisions are made. Because we are aware of what sewer expansion means, and that is not something...
It means a multitude of things.
Absolutely.
And I'm preaching to the choir, but I can envision an update, maybe your first update, months or a year down the road, is we've come up with these X amount of sites, okay? And putting up on the board all the sites in the 87% where you believe. And then we're going to go back to the committee on this. And by the way, each one of these sites, these are the potential alternatives that committee could choose in describing and defining what each of those alternatives are.
That's all I got.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Barrett?
Yeah, next item on the agenda, the request for SME for Mike Horahan, Board of Assessors. So I just wanted to give you some background on this and the unique situation that we're in. So we just recently hired Mike Horahan as our Director of Assessing, and he is coming from our Board of Assessors. He's someone that has some long-term experience with the town and with the department and everything. So I just wanted to introduce Mike. He's going to come up here and hopefully answer any questions that you may have. But we are in a position where he's currently on the Board of Assessors. He's now the Director of Assessing, and we're in a unique situation where we, it's a five-member board, and we currently have three members, who Mike is one of them. And I think because of this particular board and the timing of a lot of things that have to happen during the year, that a designation of SME for a Board of Assessors for a situation where he could continue to serve in that role if he had to and/or, you know, get off of that committee if there were other members that were on there. So I wanted to introduce Mike Horahan. So he comes with a wealth of experience in appraising. We're very happy that he's here. He is Director of Assessing and currently on the board. And because of that, is asking for this designation to actually continue in that role as deemed necessary, you know, if we didn't have enough members or, you know, something like that.
Hello, and thank you for having me. I think the one thing I wanted to point out with the uniqueness of the situation right now is that our board has been five members forever and a day. Four of the members had 20-plus years of experience, and two had just recently stepped down to age and moving out of town far away. Obviously, me taking this position was unexpected. Again, unexpected, two people retiring on top of that. I put together a couple of quick things that, why we think it's so sensitive and important for the town to have, to look at this designation. We've exempted applications that all have timeframes of three months stamped when we receive them in the office. We have chapter applications, and both of those have clocks ticking on them currently right now. We also have motor vehicle applications in the month for December and for January with clock ticking on them. Those are a little bit less of importance with the chapter applications and the exempted applications. You can't just deem deny them. Some automatically get auto-approved, which then means they're approved for the land chapter application without looking into it for the benefit of the town. With motor vehicles, you have warrants and denials and the abatements, if the abatements aren't processed. It just delays refunds and abatements going back to each individual owner of the vehicles that they'd sold. We are currently just, as of, I apologize, yesterday, closed all of our abatement applications for real estate and personal property, which is starting the ticking of three months to get everything processed through. I believe when I looked at the spreadsheet before I came to this meeting, we have 151 applications, which will then go through my current office and then write to the board to make a determination on itself. I think there's two ways of looking at this, and I think one way is if this designation is something, and we talked about having time sensitivity, we can also look at it as also maybe having a fiscal gap on it, meaning running it for until the end of this fiscal year. The importance is to get three new members onto the board, and then the idea would be me presenting to the board instead of me sitting on the board. Currently, right now, if I do stay on the board, I would be having the Assistant Assessor come in, present to the board what's going on. And the last thing I want to just note, currently, right now, I am the chairman of the board. If this were to pass, I would reorganize the board, so I would come off as chairman and just be a board member during this timeframe. I think that would be important. I don't know if there's any other follow-up questions or thoughts.
Mr. Canty, Mr. Golden?
So if you were to be given this special municipal employee designation, you would only serve on the Board of Assessors until other qualified applicants?
I think there's two avenues. Yeah, that would be one, having a finite time period on it. And the other avenue, I think, that we were discussing, again, at your discretion, is that if this were to come up again and happen again, you, this would be a very difficult board to run out and not have three people for a quorum. And then if you get into the tax rate season, when you're trying to set the tax rate, you could just, you can run into some issues if we don't have applicants and people looking to get onto this committee. So that was one thing we were talking about, having it as a special designation moving forward. Just kind of proposing both options and laying everything out there.
Well, because we, in the not-too-distant past, dealt with a special municipal employee designation request. And in a multi-member board, it applies to all members of the board, not just a specific individual. So if we granted it to you, we'd actually be granting it to the position of members of Board of Assessors.
Yep. When I called the State Ethics Commission on this as well, what I was advised was if I were hired into this position and I was not on the board, I would then be able to apply for the board. But because I've been sitting on this board, then I applied for this job, received it, I can't backstep into it without this special designation. So it was my understanding that it would be to me and not to the board because of the situation that, what's going on.
Okay.
Couldn't we designate the Director of Assessing rather than the Board of Assessors? The town clerk is saying yes.
You could.
Yes, that's what State Ethics had said as well. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you, yes.
So just to be clear for everybody in the room, that Ethics Commission cleared this. They gave you 30 days to get this done.
That is correct. I have 30 days in the State of...
There's normally a volunteer member can't take a position for 30 days. So they gave you a 30-day window to get this done.
You have a 30-day window to get approval from this board and then to file the paperwork.
So, okay, good. Just want to, I want to make that clear so there's no question about this. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions for you, Mike. The, I serve as an assessor in multiple communities across Commonwealth Massachusetts, and at least one of them I serve as a member of the Board of Assessors. So I think it's entirely appropriate for you to serve in this role, particularly given the circumstances of retiring members of your board. So I would be fully in support of this, particularly given the Ethics Commission's recommendation to the town.
Make a motion to designate the Director of Assessing as a special municipal employee?
Second?
Motion by Mr. Canty, second by Mr. Golden, discussion? Mr. Canty?
I think we did devise a scheme where we wanted to periodically review special municipal employees, which I think was going to be done on like an annual basis. So just, let's add that to the...
I believe it's June.
Yes. If we could just make sure, I'm sure it would, but just to make sure that it gets added to that list so that if and when cause to remove the position from that designation arises, we can do that. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Mr. Blitzer?
Mike, your credentials speak for themselves. I avoid yes.
Thank you. Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Lynn. Ms. McElrith, welcome.
Good evening, Select Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. It was an agenda item, and we sent a memo. So has you, based on that memo, as you may be aware, with the Votes Act of 2022, the town clerk's office is recommending that we consider consolidating our polling locations. As the member of the Select Board is the authorizing body to determine what the polling locations are in the town of Plymouth. So that being said, we have a short, hopefully a short PowerPoint presentation. We'll be here to answer any questions as you go, as we are. So currently, this is, sorry. Currently, this is our precinct map. We have 18 precincts for our 50,000 registered voters in the town of Plymouth, and we have 14 polling locations. You can kind of see the numbers and the colors, and the gold stars that you see are the 14 locations. We actually currently have some precincts, polling locations, that have two precincts in each location. Voting has changed. If you remember COVID, all the vote-by-mail that they did to get by COVID. In 2022, they passed the Votes Act, and they made a lot of those provisions permanent. So currently, any voter in the town of Plymouth can request a vote-by-mail ballot with no excuses needed. They also expanded the in-person early voting, otherwise known as IPEV, where for state elections, it's 14 days; for primaries, it's seven days; and for local elections, at least since I've been here, we've done it no less than five days. We have voter registration up to 10 days before the election. And lastly, there's automatic voter registration at the Registry of Motor Vehicles. So if you go to update your license or you register a new car, we get notified of that in the town clerk's office, and if it's a change of address, we update that record on our file. So we're showing what the, since the Votes Act for November 2022, you will see what the numbers vote-by-mail, in-person early voting, and Election Day, what those results were. I'm going to bring you to the right side of the screen where it says, in 2024, where we had five elections, because keep in mind, we had the NIPAN. We had over 84,970, so pretty much 85,000 votes. 53% of the voters that voted in 2024 in those five elections voted in-person, early in-person, or by mail. They did not vote on Election Day. The November 2024 election, you'll see the total votes of 40,835. The vote-by-mail and the in-person early votes equates to 57% of the voter turnout that day did not come on Election Day. So it's like 43% came on Election Day. So that being said, why are we looking to maybe do a consolidation? We're in a completely different voting landscape now. Voters are expecting, voters vote by convenience now, what's convenient for them, whether it's by mail, whether it's to stop by in-person early voting at Town Hall during the days that we have it beforehand. We also feel like it's easier to administer elections when we're in fewer locations. For example, we now have the election coordinator, Tyler, who will be presenting in a couple of minutes, and we have the Assistant Town Clerk. I couldn't envision the larger, the locations where we have more precincts in, they would be there the whole day. And they could help assist with issues that arise through the day versus a phone call. And me, in all honesty, in November of 2024, I put 122 miles on my car going to the 14 different locations that day. And we're also looking to, we're asking for your consideration at this point because we'll have a local election in 2025, a local election in 2026, and we'll have the state primary in 2026, usually in September. Those are historically lower turnouts than we do have for the state elections. That gives us three opportunities to know what works and what doesn't work. And that would be one of the reasons why we're before you now. So... I'm sorry, I thought Tyler was up next. We're not the only town that has looked to do this. These are some larger communities around here that, over the years, they have those many precincts, and they've gone down to one or a couple polling locations. Consolidation is an opportunity, like I just said, better election oversight, because we'll have more eyes on it. Speed of issue resolution, if we're having a technical problem, instead of calling, trying to talk them over the phone on maybe how to resolve it, we would probably have staff on site that could easily resolve that issue. We believe it will bring down, or I shouldn't say we believe, we know it will bring down the long-term costs of elections. And lastly, and I meant to start with this, and the school administration, I just have to, you know, make a note for them. They have been very cooperative with us on all the suggestions, and we've worked very closely with them. And we have had conflicts in the past of Professional Development Day on Election Day, because luckily, they closed their schools, so our voters can go in and vote with plenty of parking. However, you know, this will, going to fewer locations, will help them enhance their school professional development that they have usually on Election Days. I went really fast. Okay, so Tyler Hazard is our election coordinator. He was hired in March. It's almost been a year since he's been with us. I called 2024 a baptism by volcano with all the elections that we had to do, but he's going to come up and talk about the proposals. Thank you. but he's gonna come up and talk about the proposals, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. And thank you to the Select Board for having me and us tonight to, um, talk through these proposals. Um, as we started the, the presentation tonight, this is our current precinct map. So again, we have eighteen precincts in fourteen different locations. Ten of those polling locations currently house just a single precinct, four of them house two precincts. So what are the proposals? Proposal A, we have two proposals for you tonight. Proposal A is to go from fourteen polling places down to four. Um, those locations being Plymouth Community Intermediate School, West Elementary School, Indian Brook School, Plymouth South Middle School. So, uh, under proposal A, we would have six precincts at PCIS, three at West Elementary, four at Indian Brook, and five at Plymouth South Middle School. Something to note is that we have already had the State Elections Division come down and tour these four facilities to confirm that they meet ADA requirements, um, and they have determined that they do with the caveat of, at PCIS, they noted some minor, um, patching is needed, uh, in the entranceway to that facility. Uh, we have, speaking of the school administration, we have worked with their facilities director, who has confirmed that that minor patching is not a problem and that will be taken care of ahead of May. So what does that map under proposal A look like? Um, as you can see here, the four large black stars are the proposed polling locations. The precincts are grouped by color, so green to one, blue to another, et cetera. Um, in addition to considering what would work best for election administration, what would work best for the school administration, we're of course always thinking about voters. So just to reiterate what Kelly mentioned earlier, voters now have the option to vote by mail or to vote at Town Hall during early in-person voting for every single election. Um, and they certainly are utilizing those options, as we've mentioned. Uh, but what if they want to vote on Election Day at the polls? So under proposal A, there would certainly be a change to their commute times on Election Day. For some voters, there would be no change because not every precinct will move, some of them will be at their same location. Some voters will see under this, under a proposal A, their commute times actually will reduce, uh, because maybe it's easier for in precinct ten for them to get to PCIS than it is for them to travel all the way to Federal Furnace. Um, there will also, of course, be voters whose commute times increase to varying degrees. Um, our estimations, our calculations see that that increase would be no higher than about ten minutes for the furthest voter. Um, one specific area that we looked at was the southernmost point in District Seventeen, uh, specifically Kelly Street, which would be the furthest commute to the polls that we have identified under this proposal. Um, and of the nine voters on, who voted in the November election on Kelly Street, fifty-five percent of them voted early in-person or by mail, which is right along with the trend that we talked about earlier of fifty-three percent of all votes cast in twenty twenty-four being, um, by mail or early in-person. So, proposal B. Proposal B is to consolidate down to five locations. Those locations being PCIS, West Elementary, Indian Brook, South Elementary School, and Plymouth South Middle School. So the change here is the inclusion of South Elementary School. This is a map of what proposal B would look like. So again, just to reiterate, it's, uh, a very similar proposal with the exception of the inclusion of a polling location in South Plymouth, that being, uh, South Elementary School. So the considerations in terms of change in voter commute are very similar to those in proposal A, aside from, uh, South Elementary School. So what would this actually look like on the ground at the polling location on Election Day? Uh, our goal would be a similar setup to this photo from a fellow Massachusetts community. Um, it would be a very structured setup, uh, with large signage to direct voters in and out of the polling location as seamlessly as possible. This is a draft aerial view of what would be, uh, PCIS under proposal A and B, where six poll, six precincts would be housed. So, uh, voters would enter through one door of the gym, proceed to their precinct check-in tables, be checked in and directed into their precinct lane. Uh, these lanes would be lined with voter booths and rope stanchions, which are shown in this, um, uh, this design as the red bars, that would keep them within their precinct and direct them towards their precinct tabulator at the end of the lane on the other side of the gym. After they cast their ballot, they would then be, uh, they would leave on the other side of the gym through an exit door. Again, this is a very structured design that would hopefully move people in and out as seamlessly as possible, uh, understanding that there would be a lot of foot traffic, uh, under, uh, uh, these consolidation proposals. One thing that you will not find on here, um, is at the, towards the entrance, we would also have, we plan to have a, um, voter lookup table for folks who don't know necessarily what precinct number they are, but know they have to vote at that location. Uh, we would be able to assist them in identifying what precinct the check-in table they should be going towards. Now I'll turn it back over to Kelly to talk about some financials.
Thank you, Tyler. So in order to do this type of consolidation, needless to say, we would need, um, some upfront investment. By Mass General Law, we would be required to notify any household where there's a voter, where their precinct, where their polling location changed by, with a postcard. So we estimate that the barriers that, uh, we mentioned in the picture, in order to keep everyone flowing the way they're supposed to, precinct signs, in order to make sure everybody knew where they were going. Um, the other issue that I've no, that I've noticed personally since I've come to the town of Plymouth is storage. Our voting booths are, are stored at each of the fourteen different locations. I know of one location where they've been calling me, 'cause they are literally keeping the extra voting booths in the girls' bathroom. There's major storage issues at these locations. So a way to relieve that is to purchase two trailers that are armwheels that can be hooked up to a pickup truck, park them at DPW, and for the setup, you know, the trailers would go to the locations, unload the voting booths, get the setup, and at the, pocket overnight, and when it was time to, to, um, to take down the materials, put them all back in the, in the trailer and, um, bring it back to DPW. So, um, because of the, the four locations that we're, that we're basing this on, we're thinking two trailers to begin with, so that the information, the, the equipment can just get there for, um, setup. That being said, we estimate the total investment to be about thirty-four thousand dollars, um, for, um, for this consolidation. That being said, um, the consolidation will also be saving us money, and we estimate that to be about nine thousand dollars, um, due to staffing for less police that we need to have. And we would still probably have the same staffing when it comes to election workers, but we would be changing that a little bit. So we do estimate that we will be saving money. So within the next three to four elections, if this was approved, we would be recouping that money. Potential challenges, yeah, with any type of change, um, there's always some challenges. So yes, there will be more traffic at these locations, especially PCIS and South Middle. Um, but, uh, one way to alleviate that, and we did include this in the nine thousand, is keep one extra police officer at, at each one of those locations to help with the traffic on the, on the outside and one on the inside. Voter density, there'll be more voters going to each one of these locations, um, and lining up and queuing, but we would have the staff there to ensure they know where they're going. Again, if voters are not comfortable with traffic and parking and, um, in crowds, they can vote by mail or they can vote early before the election here at Town Hall. And another challenge will be, will be the setup time and worker support. You know, we'll need more assistance from DPW workers to help move those trailers and help unload, and we'll need, um, additional response from the school custodians, not, you know, now they're usually setting up ten, you know, a couple tables and, and ten voting booths. Now they're gonna be setting up, you know, five, five to six locations. So they're gonna need a little bit more time and assistance and, and mapping and so on and so forth. But, um, we really believe that this might be the time to do this for the town of Plymouth, and we brought this consolidation forward for your review and questions and discussion.
Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Kelly and Tyler, thank you for the presentation. Um, the, uh, the map of what the actual voting day looks like brought me back to my days, uh, putting similar maps up for freshman move-in. Um, I, so I'm glad you came back to this map, because I was deeply, uh, disturbed by the lack of, um, polling location in the southern half of our town. Uh, I think for many folks who are way on the southern tip, um, that would be upsetting to them. So if I, if, if my choices are between A and B, I would probably choose B. Could you go back to the map that's like where we currently are, what it is today? Um, it, could you just talk about why you, um, chose those locations versus, say, the high schools?
So, in working with the school administration, so keep in mind that this, the, this location, um. Okay, I'm not liking this clerk by any stretch of the imagination. This location right here is South Middle, okay? So it's on the same campus as South High, and it wouldn't get you any closer to the southern part of Plymouth. And the reason why we chose or that, we agreed with the school administration for the middle schools and not the high schools is the high schools have sports and they have, you know, I can see volleyball and basketball and all of those being in conflict when we take over the gym for.
Yep.
At least a day and a half, so that's why it was determined the middle schools.
So it was a recommendation by the school department based on extracurricular activities?
Correct.
That's all I got, thank you.
Mr. Canty?
I'd also, I'd follow up on, I mean, PCIS, although it's not as close to north as Plymouth South Middle is to Plymouth South High, they still are quite close.
Correct, I think we timed it that it was like a mile and a half when we went from one place to the other. Yeah, uh, it was like a mile and a half.
So in terms of, I mean, I like precinct A out of these two proposals.
Proposal A.
Proposal. Yeah, right, I like proposal A, my mistake. I, I don't like the innumerable precincts, but, um, I, in terms of, so seventeen, sixteen, twelve, I mean, sixteen and twelve, based on the similar color scheme up there, it's hard to discern, but like seventeen is so geographically large because people are pretty thin on the ground down there, right?
And it's also Mile Standish State Forest.
Yes, yes.
So.
So a lot of those roads do not have houses on.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
And do you have a sense of, to assuade some of Mr. Golden's concerns, and I know there was that particular street where fifty, there in the trends, but are seventeen, sixteen, twelve, nine, maybe par, eight, 'cause it's also a little bit of a distance? Are they consistent with those trends too? They're fifty, like, that's, that's not an outlier, it's consist, fairly consistent throughout the community that.
Yes.
Many people are, regardless of where you live, fifty to fifty-five percent of people are voting in-person, early voting, or mail-in voting.
Correct.
Under current.
Correct, so just so you realize, the yellow that's off to the right is, um, you know, that's Indian Brook, and we're including Manomet and Cedarville in it.
Yes.
Um, the blue, which is where eighteen is, um, we are including, you know, that blue as well as four, three, two, and one.
Yep.
And then, and then thirteen, eleven, and five, which is the greenish color, would be West Elementary. And the star that's in ten would be ten. No, is that North High? Yeah, that's, that's, yeah.
That's.
I'm sorry, that, that purple, that ten is actually, I'm sorry, that's North, that's North High.
That's PCI, PCIS.
Okay, yep, oh, I'm sorry.
The one in, the gold star in four is priest, is North High?
No, that's Indian Brook.
No, in four, precinct four currently votes at North High.
Gotcha, okay, sorry.
Um, okay.
I drive to all of these places, but.
Yes, well, and some of them used to be numbered differently, although not, not that one, but, um, okay. And in terms, so I know in the state election years, we send out postcards.
Yes.
The state sends out postcards. Have we considered sending out postcards on the off years?
Well, we, if this is approved, we do have to send out postcards, and we could definitely include a, um, a note on there about voting by mail and voting early. The, on, on that note, Mr. Canty, we recently sent out the census to over thirty thousand households, and if voters turned it over, they saw a QR code that brought them right to the online system at the state to, um, apply online for the local election. And we have almost three hundred applications from that alone, and the mailing just went out two weeks ago.
Okay. I mean, I, I would say I am in favor of proposal A out of these two proposals, just because I think any amount of transition and consolidation is going to have some growing pains, but the fewer, the, 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 the easier it is to determine where you go with fewer new locations, the fewer growing pains there will be. I would like to see two, but I, uh, because everything else, I think, is a half measure, and I don't really believe in half measures, but I'm willing to, uh, to go to four. But I, I think five would just add a level of additional confusing, confusion to some folks, that which one do they go to? And then there's, you gotta remember a whole new set, at least this is more straightforward.
Mr. Blitzer?
Kelly, you, you showed the state elections, twenty-two, twenty-four, but what is, uh, town election?
Uh, town, the town election is the third Saturday in May, so.
No, 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 what are the numbers?
What are the numbers?
Especially with the early voting and.
So first of all.
Vote by mail.
So.
In Town Hall voting.
So for the NIP ban, we, we had about eight hundred people vote in-person early, and I believe we had about two thousand vote by mail, and we had about eight thousand. So we had twenty-eight hundred people voted early, and I think the total, don't quote me on, on the exact numbers, but I think it was around a seventy-five hundred total vote.
Yeah, so about five thousand.
Yeah.
Divide that by fourteen precincts, I mean, it's.
It wasn't a lot.
We have to consolidate.
It wasn't a lot.
It just doesn't, uh.
The local election for twenty twenty-four is, is a misnomer because the postcards went out for the primary in March. We mailed, I believe, I think we mailed close to ten thousand ballots out there for the local election, and we, and we got maybe four thousand of them back. So again, the turnout was around seven thousand, so to your point.
Right, and.
Election Day wasn't very busy.
Haven't worked state elections, worked local elections for thirty years. You know, I've seen, and Marshfields has one, they've had one, that a whole town votes one place. And it's so efficient, it, it really is, so I, I see the numbers dwindling, and, uh, you know, it's, it doesn't make sense. So that, to go to four precincts makes so much sense, it's gonna save money, I believe it'll make it more efficient too.
One thing I will note is all the numbers that we're seeing on early voting and vote by mail, it's not really increasing the voter turnout, which people would think that it would. People have more opportunity to vote, it should increase turnout. It really is just giving the voter an option on how they wanna vote.
Right.
If, if a voter's gonna vote, they're gonna vote, it's, it's, it's where they, it's how they vote now that they have the three different options.
Mr. Golden?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I share Mr. Canty's sentiments about, uh, the fewer, uh, locations we have, the, the better. Um, I, but, you know, I, I joke all the time that I'm the only one who lives. But, you know, I joke all the time that I'm the only one who lives south of Town Hall on this board, though I think technically Mr. Mahoney does and perhaps Mr. Blitzer. But, I'm the only one who lives in the southern half of the town, for sure. And people down there feel that the town has forgotten them in every issue. So, the optics of not having a polling location in the southern half of town, I think, creates a problem for us that we don't need. So, perhaps there's an option C here that hasn't yet been considered, where there are four locations and one of them is South Elementary.
Unfortunately, I don't believe the gymnasium at South Elementary would allow us to have that many precincts, as opposed to the South Middle Gymnasium. That is why we're doing more of the South Campus.
It's the middle of town anyway.
Right.
South High School's the middle of town.
Middle School, too.
In the middle. You're right.
Just one more. Kelly, again, if we vote on a plan, and the plan doesn't work, we can always change it, right?
Polling locations are designated by the Select Board at the pleasure of the Select Board.
Right. So, if we give this a shot, see if it works, and if it doesn't work, we can always make a change, right? So, okay.
It's just the cost of the postcards for the change.
Right. Next.
Sean?
Kelly, irrespective of whether it's four or five locations, is the cost for savings relatively the same?
Um...
You had a nine thousand dollar...
We're thinking it's about sixty-seven hundred. Tyler gave me the number right here. It's about sixty-seven hundred dollars per election if we were to do the five locations versus the nine thousand we're estimating with the four locations.
So, nine thousand savings on four, with four, and sixty-seven...
Sixty-seven hundred.
All right, so if we went with five, it might take another election or two to recoup the break even.
Correct.
Okay. I agree with Mr. Golden's sentiments with respect to the southern end of the community, and I have no problem going with five and having South Elementary open for our new friends down in Red Brook and, you know, the two other precincts down in that area.
Did you just say that Indian Brook couldn't be a voting spot, or did I not understand you?
I was suggesting that South Elementary could not have as many look...
South?
South Elementary could not have as many precincts in its location that we're looking to put at South Middle, because of the size of the gym. So, to Mr. Golden's point, he was looking to put all the precincts that we have in Proposal A, that we have at Plymouth South Middle, nine, twelve, like five precincts in South Elementary, and I don't think that gymnasium would be big enough for that.
And again, that's a mile and a half away?
No, there's a, South Middle to South Elementary is more than...
How many miles is it?
I think, more importantly, how many minutes is it?
It's the only thing I didn't track. Assistant Town Manager's going to Google it, but...
Based off of the research that we were doing for that southern part of Precinct Seventeen, the change between where they're currently voting at South Elementary School to Plymouth South Middle was about nine minutes. So, I imagine it's around a nine minute.
Yeah. That would make more, yeah.
Commute between the two.
Because you're going from Long Pond Road to Bourne Road.
But, nine minutes on top of, like, for people in Buttermilk Bay...
On top of...
On top of what they've already commuted to.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or you can vote by mail, not have to have any minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
You just walked down your mailbox.
Yeah. You can, if people are not wanting to, if voters are not wanting to drive on Election Day, they can definitely request a ballot by mail, and they can definitely come to Town Hall in the days leading up to the election where we have in-person early voting. And one other note, I think this is interesting fact. I can't control the clicker. So, if you look at the November 2024 in-person early voting, seven thousand six hundred and twenty-six, that's how much we get for our local elections in the three local elections I've had here. So, in the fourteen days leading up to the presidential primary, we had as many voters that vote in any local election that I've been involved in in person over those fourteen days. So, that shows that the voters are willing to travel when it's convenient for them. And if it's convenient for them to vote on a Tuesday before the election, they will travel to Town Hall.
Mr. Golden, then Mr. Canty, then myself.
All right. I agree with you, Kelly. However, many of those people are here on other business. And so, I think that, like, I started voting in-person early when I started being involved in committee work in town. But, I don't think that, I mean, just look at, just look at, you're talking about the presidential election. Look at the September election, four hundred and ninety-one people. Not a significant chunk. And I just, I don't know about you folks, but my phone is blowing up right now with people in South Plymouth who think that we ought to have a precinct in their location.
I'm just proposing the proposals and giving you good and bad options.
Mr. Canty?
I think that there is no perfect solution. The polling locations have always been convenient or inconvenient for certain folks living in certain areas. I remember when reprecincting was done a few years ago, that there were some people who were very upset that they used to be in Precinct X and now they're in Precinct Y, and they had to drive to a new polling location. I do not think, I understand that people living in Buttermilk Bay, it's difficult to vote from there. I hand-delivered some signs when I was running for Select Board down to Buttermilk Bay, and though I made an effort to reclaim as many of my signs as possible, I accepted those ones as a write-off because it was so long from where I lived to bring some, I live in North Plymouth, so Buttermilk Bay is very far for me. And I understand that. But, adding nine minutes to those commutes for when it's optional that they commute at all because they can vote by mail is not, in my opinion, that significant. And I do think the benefit of having a fifth location is going to be more than outweighed by the confusion of having all these, having to additionally explain that, oh, it's not these four, these divisions, it's these five and those. And then if we have to consolidate later because we see efficiencies, it's only going to get worse. I think four is a cleaner solution. No one is going to be a hundred percent happy with whatever we decide, but four has the more significant savings, more efficiency, and over time, people will become accustomed to it. And people, as the town clerk said, the people that vote are voting, they're choosing their mechanism of voting. Maybe some people will choose to vote by mail or in-person early voting because of this, but they might have done that anyways. I still support the four locations.
Kelly, I just have a question on the trailers. I think it was like seventeen thousand?
Yeah, for two.
Will you be using those for storage, or...
Yes. Yeah, the voting booths will be stored in there, and then when it's election, when it's time for setup, they'll come out, get set up. And then when it's takedown, they'll be taken down, put in, back into the trailer, and the trailer parked at DPW. I actually had that situation in my previous community, and it worked very, very well because you're just moving the equipment twice instead of moving it from all the different locations.
Okay. I was just going to, you know, say maybe it's cheaper to rent them for the day, but it's, you're going to store stuff in it.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, oh, okay, I'm sorry. It would become more difficult for some of these schools that we're talking about, they don't have any storage whatsoever. So, instead of having to store ten to twelve, if they have one polling location in their school, and all of a sudden, we're going to say, okay, now you're going to have six, they're going to look at me and say, there's no way, there's no place for us to put these boots. So, we need to put them somewhere.
Any other questions?
Yes. If there are no other questions, I would make a motion that we support Proposal A.
I'll second that. Motion? Discussion? Mr. Golden?
No.
Mr. Blitzer?
Yes.
Mr. Canty?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
And myself, yes.
Thank you for your consideration. We will be working over the next couple of months to get this publicized and out to people.
Okay, I'm sure we'll have some fan mail.
Yes.
So, we'll probably, you know, discussing this again if it's...
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I had a conversation with the Chairperson of COPC when he stopped in my office this afternoon, and we already have a date that I'll be going in front of COPC to talk to them about it. And we already have some plans in mind on what we need to do to move this forward.
And also, regardless of what plan goes forward in the end, maybe look at this again in two years?
Absolutely.
You know, maybe we go from four to two.
Absolutely.
Depending, driven by numbers, naturally.
And I will, not to go too far ahead, but there's room for expansion in South Middle and PCIS because of their cafeterias and where they're located. So, there is room for expansion there.
And, you know, I don't get the geographics as far as where people live in the state forests and all that, but, I mean, if it comes back and you can put something down farther south, you know, I'm open to that, too. So, I just would like to keep it as close as we can to four. If it has to be five, I know, you know, against that, but, you know, let's just take a look. It's something new, so...
Yep. We appreciate your time and vote.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
And I bet you did a good job, and I know everybody's happy over there, at least they were last week.
Tyler's been wonderful, has the election coordinator for the town of Plymouth, and we're lucky to have him.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on the public comment? Yes, sir? Please identify yourself for the record.
Reverend Malaguti, I would like to thank the Select Board tonight for voting for the reestablishment of the Recycling Committee. My rationales for, one, for the past number of years, I have been attending the Kingston Recycling Committee for a numerous amount of decision-making problems that they have, and also looking at how they could benefit the town. My interest in that started with Mr. Brundisi's first iteration of the town back in the twenty-teens, when we had the solid waste working group to look at how the transfer station would actually be self-sufficient. And there was a talk then about either closing the dump and going all private or having it as a cooperation. While I understand that there are a lot of pros and cons of having multitudes of committees and consolidating some of them based upon other efforts, I think that this one will provide merits in not just cost effectiveness for different operations of the town within solid waste and other endeavors, but it also provides another avenue to solicit grant, to solicit grant opportunities as well, too, to facilitate these efforts. And I will put my hat in the ring for one of the seats on that as well, too, since I know a number of you have known my efforts in this as well, too. So, I do want to thank the Board again for this effort, and eventually, we will come to the day that we will need to possibly consolidate committees and dissolve them. But, I think this one is a fitting one for the community based on the needs of the town and going forward. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Jade, is there anyone online? Oh, okay.
Meg Sheehan, attorney with Community Land and Water Coalition. I'm here to request that you put a pause on the permit for the seventy-one Hedges Pond Road sand and gravel mining permit. That's a thirty-three acre sand and gravel mine, and also that you investigate the role of the Plymouth Foundation and the ownership and permitting of that sand and gravel mining operation. As I hope you know by now, sand and gravel mining destroys our land, our community, air, water, causes traffic, and other types of pollution. Irreversibly allowed this town's topography to be altered, irreversibly and flattened over the last twenty or thirty years. Sand and gravel mining is generating tens of millions of dollars for sand mining companies and very little revenue for the town. Seventy-one Hedges Pond Road is the last remaining, one of the last remaining hills in the town that has not been leveled. It's owned as a result of a deal in which the Select Board sold the property to the Plymouth Foundation, a 501(c)(3) allegedly, for one dollar. It is now being marketed for four million dollars. That money will go to the Plymouth Foundation, handled, the money handled by the foundation, and seven of those foundation members, directors, and officers are municipal employees. That is a conflict of interest. In the past, the Plymouth Foundation has generated revenue from sand and gravel mining according to their IRS 501(c)(3) tax returns. There are seven municipal employees who are on the Board or are officers of the foundation, as I mentioned. The building inspector reports to the Town Manager and the Board of Select and Chair, and both of them have a role in overseeing this person who granted the permit to the Plymouth Foundation to conduct sand and gravel mining on this operation. That property should not be sold by the foundation to E.J. Pontiff and Standish Investments. There should be a pause put on that permit. The foundation, both of you have a role in it, could put a hold on that transaction. And I'd like to point out that at the last Select Board meeting last week, I commented about this, I stated the facts. The Town Manager afterwards rebutted what I said in his Town Manager's Report, and he basically called me a liar, said that I was up here providing misinformation. I want to state that every fact that I've just stated is available on state websites. You can go to the Secretary of State Corporate Records Office, and you can see who are the officers and directors of the Plymouth Foundation. I know, Mr. Canty, I'm almost out of time. You can also go to the Attorney General's Office, Public Charities Division, and look up the 990 tax returns of the Plymouth Foundation under the name of Plymouth Regional Economic Development Foundation, and you can see that this 501(c)(3) that Mr. Brundisi and others serve on has two-point-three million dollars in assets, and that they have generated revenue from the sale of land formerly owned by the town and from sand and gravel mining. This deserves an investigation, and that permit needs to be put on hold. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment?
Good evening. I'm Sybil Holland. I'm a town representative from Precinct Eight, and I also live in Ellisville. And I also am speaking in favor of putting a pause on the permit for seventy-one Hedges Pond Road. Gentlemen, the Ellisville-Cedarville community is a small one. It's very, very precious to those of us who live there. It is a unique, heavily forest-balanced ecological niche that provides a protected space for a variety of wildlife. It is bordered, as I'm sure you know, by Saltwater Marsh, by Cape Cod Bay, and of course, is home to our aquifer, which is the sine qua non of our entire existence. which is the sine qua non of our entire existence, providing as it does clean and fresh water for us all. I am very concerned that we here are on the precipice of setting a precedent and upsetting the delicate balance that was long ago established by nature. Sand mining in any amount alters our environment, as we have seen from the mining that has already taken place here. Some of it is hidden from view and some of it off Route Three, where we drive by and can see the enormous crater that has been left. And we can see and have to breathe the airborne particles that fly up and fill the air, creating a respiratory hazard for those who, like me, have pulmonary issues. The land that comprises Ellisville and Cedarville has been held in stewardship by those who came before us all and passed on from generation to generation and now to us. Do we really want to be the generation after 400 years that literally permits, I use that word intentionally, that literally permits this land to be violated permanently and ravaged? Sadly, there are myriad of examples and instances where land and resources have been altered in the very name of economic development and of course, growth, only later to be recognized. Whoops, we've really caused some permanent and irreputable damage here. Once you make a final decision on this land mining project and the digging itself has begun, this decision cannot be unmade and the consequential damage cannot be undone. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Is someone online? Oh, hello? Pat?
Can you hear me?
Uh, Bailey?
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Can you speak a little louder?
Okay.
There we go. Thank you.
I just, I agree and I thank David Gould and John Mahoney.
Can't hear her, no. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Voltrane. Okay. Well, if you can speak a little louder, Pat, I appreciate it.
Okay, I, I just want to say that I disagree with the four polling stations. Well, Plymouth has been ignored long enough and this is just unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Jade? Catherine?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you get closer to your computer?
Okay, thank you.
There you go.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Harrelson, and I am with Community Land and Water Coalition, a Plymouth-based nonprofit organization. I too speak tonight to request that the select board put a pause on the building permit at 71 Hedges Pond Road. And for this reason, I state that in issuing the building permit, the planning board ignored the will of the community. The Cedarville Steering Committee voted unanimously to tell the planning, to recommend to not, to recommend to the planning board not to vote to approve this project. They voted unanimously that this project requires a special permit, and they voted unanimously that this project does not meet their qualifications for a special permit. On December 4, 2024, they sent a list of recommendations on this project to the planning board. I'll just read one of them very quickly. Significantly, the proponents' presentation to the committee was somewhat nebulous about the final project, a skating rink, a lumberyard. Assuming the project ever got built once the sand had been mined, one of the proposed buildings was a warehouse, 20% larger than the Amazon warehouse at Exit 17, which, with this attendant truck traffic, did not seem to Cedarville residents. Appropriate for our village and was not in keeping with what the town suggested would be built in Cedarville's light industrial and commercial district when the district was proposed and approved by town meeting in 2018. Furthermore, a letter-writing campaign sent in over 1,000 letters in opposition to this project to Plymouth town officials. So I repeat, in approving this project, both the planning board and the building inspector ignored the will of the community, and I ask the select board to put a pause on the building permit. Thank you.
Is that it? No? Okay, Nicole?
Hello, my comment is in regards to last night's airport committee appointment. There was not a public comment. So I just wanted to say that the reason the committee was formed was because a group of residents were unhappy about the current conditions of airport traffic and do not want an expansion. Almost 300 people have sent letters in opposition, and yet the select board did us a huge disservice to the West Plymouth residents. Out of the eight people chosen, only one was against the expansion. Of the remaining chosen, I believe, one was a corporate pilot, one is the owner of Yankee Aviation Maintenance at the airport, one is a former airport commissioner, one is a grandson of the current airport commissioner, one is a student pilot, and one stated he is fine with the expansion. This committee is grossly out of balance and defeats the purpose. We already have a commission that ignores our concerns. To say that I am disappointed is an understatement.
Anyone else, Jade? Julia?
Hello. Yep. Hi.
Hi.
Apologies in advance if my toddler chimes in here. I'm a Kingston resident. I have a degree in environmental studies. I'll preface my comment by saying that, yes, as was mentioned earlier in tonight's meeting, we are approaching the 250th birthday of the United States. And also, the Wampanoag people have lived in harmony with these lands for at least 12,000 years. With that, I'm commenting on the permit that was unjustly granted to E.J. Pontiff at 71 Hedges Pond Road in Cedarville. This permit is unjust both ecologically and public health-wise, but I want to specifically emphasize that in issuing this permit, the town of Plymouth violated the sovereignty of the Herring Pond Wampanoag Tribe. 71 Hedges Pond Road lies within the boundaries of the Herring Pond Wampanoag Great Lot, and it is well documented that this site contains significant Wampanoag cultural and historical artifacts. Despite being made aware of this on numerous occasions, the town did not require that the developer conduct an archaeological survey, despite this very reasonable request from Chairwoman Melissa Ferretti. The issuing of this permit without consulting the tribe is a violation of the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, which was endorsed by the U.S. State Department in 2010 and requires that governments cooperate with indigenous peoples, quote, "in order to obtain their free and informed consent prior to the approval of any project affecting their lands or territories and other resources," unquote. Therefore, at a minimum, the town should adhere to the very reasonable request of Melissa Ferretti. The town should pause this permit and mandate a comprehensive archaeological survey conducted by an independent third-party archaeologist, selected and overseen by the Section 108 process, the tribal historic preservation officer, and the Wampanoag people funded by the developer. More broadly, I'd like to comment as a parent that this town's relentless allowance of extractive so-called development projects and sand mining is a form of environmental injustice and a danger to our children and the future generations. As a parent, I condemn this reckless destruction of these ecosystems and aquifers that we depend on for our survival. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the public comment? Okay, town manager's report.
Okay, a number of announcements for this evening. So I just want to inform the board that as of last Friday, the town has closed on 22 Mary B. Lane. As we all know, this was approved at town meeting about a year ago. This is the building that's adjacent to the existing DPW facility. So the next steps with this project will be to go to bid to identify an owner, project manager. And then once we come, find the OPM, then we'll go ahead and work with the designer selection board to identify an architect to design the renovation of the structure. So we'll keep the board posted on as we move through those processes. As I pointed out in the past, we have been really focused this past 12 months, and I would say probably for the next 12 months, on planning. So as we, we've talked a lot about master planning through the planning board this past year. But just another one to bring the board up to date, we just kicked off our Forges Field and our Hedges Pond Park master planning process. The next step in that iteration will be to engage the community and try to seek their input as we identify the future use of both Forges Field and Hedges Pond. As a PSA, the warrant for the special town meeting will close this coming Friday. So those folks that are looking for citizens petitions or board and committee members who are looking to submit an article for the special town meeting, again, the warrant will close at noon time this Friday. The Route 80 Cemetery Project is moving forward. Last night, the ZVA approved the project. We, we hope to go to bid this spring for the construction. As you know, this project was approved at town meeting for the build-out of a new cemetery on Route 80. So we'll go to bid this spring for construction. We are planning on a presentation to the Cemetery Commission in March. And then thereafter, we're about 90% design right now. So we're hoping right after we get the Cemetery Commission's approval, we'll move forward and do a final presentation to the select board before we begin, we begin construction. And I have two other announcements I'd like to make. Again, goes back to planning. So we started a process, I mentioned in the past, that Lee Hartman from the Planning Department and Steve Cole, who's the foundation's economic development director, they wrote a grant and received a grant of about $350,000 to the EDA so that we could have a planning, a master planning process over at the 1,600 acres that Holtec possesses. We were able to engage a consultant firm by the name of Sasaki Associates, and that process is well underway. So the next, the next iteration in that process, there'll be a visioning session that will be on February 13th at PCIS on Long Pond Road, and that will begin at 6:00 PM. And so that's really important because to date, we've already received 3,500 survey responses. We've had over 2,800 folks have gone to the project website, and over 96 comments have been made. So clearly, there's a lot of interest in the master planning of the Holtec property. And so again, the visioning session is Thursday, the 13th, and then in April, we'll have an open house. So we are hoping to complete the master plan by sometime, I would say, late summer. We will come back to the board as we get further on in this planning process to seek your input as well. And then the last one I just want to bring up, we've had Mike Cahill, who's our climate residency planner before the board, to talk about the downtime residency project, him and his director, David Gould. So we continue to move forward that planning process as well. So this coming Saturday, February 8th at 9:00 AM, there will be a workshop that will, we're asking folks for their input on this project. So this is the project over in Court Street and Main Street Extension. This is a project that is focused on climate planning and sustainability. And then we'll have, we'll have future workshops we'll announce in the future. The workshops are held at the, at this courthouse, at the 1749 courthouse over at Town Square. And then again, that will begin this February 8th at 9:00 AM. And so pending any questions, that's all I have for this evening. For the folks that have asked a pause on the project at 71 Hedges Pond Road, I wanted to be clear that the building commissioner issues building permits, and there is an appeal process. So those folks that feel that they would like this project to stop, they could also, they could follow the appeal process. That's well documented, and I know folks in this room understand that process extremely well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Derek? New business? Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Chairman, this is a new old business. So seems to be a weekly thing that Ms. Sheehan gets up to the podium. And I do know that, I think roughly a month ago, you had offered a, you know, a sit-down up on the fourth floor and to have discussions on some of the numerous topics that are, you know, we keep going back and forth on. And it was just, I was just curious if such a meeting had taken place yet and was it productive?
No meeting has taken place, but I did receive a text message from Ms. Sheehan, and she did say she wanted to meet. And just waiting for a return call to set up the meeting.
You want somebody, you know, a second member of this board to sit on in that, I'm more than welcome to make myself available.
Thank you. Anything else on the new business? I, I have a couple things. The first one, we all went out to ISO last week. Mr. Golden, no, Mr. Golden couldn't, but it was very educating and thank you, John, for even recommending it. That's, you know, I had a great time and I learned a lot. But what brings me to that is on the way back, Selectman Blitzer's phone was going off about electricity bills and the price of the delivery fee, if you will, transmission fee. And it's double the amount of the actual electric. So I asked Derek, I brought him some bills, I brought him some town mailouts that we had in the file from, I don't know when it was, it was a while ago though. And it's not really so much the rate, it's the transmission of the power. So I did reach out to the state delegation, Mr. Fernandez, Ms. Badger, and Nicole Manfredi. And Nicole, Ms. Badger actually went with us to the ISO that day. And we going quite late into the evening about, you know, why, and she's trying to get answers. So, long story short, I offered them up to come to one of our meetings. Ms. Badger said she'd be more than happy to. Mr. Fernandez really didn't see why, you know, in other words, I wasn't inviting him here to beat him up, but I said a lot of people in this town, and I'm sure many other towns have questions of why that, you know, these, these rates are what they are and how they get there, whether it's DPU or it's not them or. So I just wanted people to, and Mr. Taviras also called me when he got his utility bill. So I would like to see if we could set something up, Derek, where the delegation, somebody needs to come in here and explain. Now, I know you reached out to Everso, is correct, and they declined on, on coming here, is that the right word?
They would prefer not to come to the select board meeting. They would prefer to work with the administration on various strategies to provide information back to the community to include some print material that would offer advice as to how folks who are looking for some type of assistance to help pay their utility bills. So I'm still working with them, hoping to have something by the end of the week that we could share with the community.
Okay, and then maybe Mr. Cahill or somebody from that department can come in and explain. Because now the question is, is the town paying higher prices because of the contract that some of us are in or all of us are in? And I don't think that's the case, but, you know, people want answers. How this happened, I mean, is it going to change? I can't sit here and say it's going to change, but we need to band together, even if it means with other communities. And, you know, if our delegation can't help us, and, and I don't say that they won't, but, you know, we need to put a little pressure on them to, to help us and guide us to how this happens, so the people understand that are getting these bills. I mean, you think of the seniors in this town, and the young families too, that can't afford it. And, and you know, that's why economic development is important in this town. And every corner you turn on, somebody's up, you know, with an organization or a group, and they want to turn it down. Well, you know what, you go out and explain to these people why their taxes just went up like they did, why their electric bills just went up. Not everybody can afford just to not worry about these bills.
That's right.
A lot of people are just living paycheck to paycheck. A lot of people are just living paycheck to paycheck, and that's the people I work for. Okay? So it needs to be addressed, we need to change our thinking, we need to have some planning with that. And like I say, as far as the water and the aquifer goes, I've said it once, I'll say it a thousand times, show me scientific evidence where removal, sand removal, affects the aquifer. Show me the scientific data. Very simple, two words. And maybe we have that meeting, you'll bring that scientific data.
Why would I want me to -- because you just totally called it to attack you, and have the town manager --
No, no, no one's attacking you, and I have the floor, not you, Ms. Sheehan. When you were up there, I didn't interrupt you, but thank you. So I have a right to my opinion. I have no opinion on it. Alls I'm saying, so now you're -- we're speaking, is to bring me the scientific data. We'll start with that. So where were we? So we're going to get the utilities pretty much straightened out or addressed, so we can explain to the people in this town what's going on with that.
Certainly can have Michael Cahill come in and talk about the municipal aggregation program. That's something we can schedule the next couple of weeks, yes.
Please. Okay. Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for digging into this issue. I too am receiving calls from residents who are concerned about their utility bills. I know there's not a lot that we can do from, like, a -- we can't force the utility companies to do anything. We don't have any power over them to change their practices. But we do have a -- we do have the opportunity to advocate for legislation. We have the ability to advocate for hearings with our legislative delegation. Is it appropriate if this board were to address a letter to the DPU, or to the governor, or to the legislature to say, on behalf of our community, we think that this needs to be revisited?
And I did bring that up to the all-of-state delegation, including Mr. Fernandez, to bring that message, at least to the governor's office. But I think in actually drafting a letter and sending it off. And we should reach out to other communities, Kingston, Carver, our neighbors, and, you know, because it's everywhere. I mean, how is that, you know, I think Ken said it, Mr. Taviras said his electric bill was $1,100. $1,100? How do people pay that and survive, especially seniors on a limited income? So we need to get answers for the people that we represent, that's for sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, should we have this as an agenda item perhaps for a future meeting?
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
So, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for bringing up the site visit we took Thursday out to the New England ISO, which is the independent service operator of the New England Grid. And we went into the brain system, the brain center, out in Holyoke, and, you know, it was a phenomenal site visit from my perspective. And of course, thank you for setting up the transportation. But one of the keys here is, they're doing exactly what the citizens of this community and the residents of New England want them to do. They're building redundancy and security in the system so that we have sufficient amounts of energy flowing and available to us at all times, you know, 12 months out of the year. The problem is, and I think this was under a line of questioning from Mr. Blutz, was that these companies that control the electricity, they have a monopoly.
Of course.
They have a monopoly, and that's there. You can't go anywhere else to get electricity. So the issue that you're discussing right now with respect to those costs, that has to be done at the state level, and that's our delegation working with Ms. Healy to see if there are solutions up there, because we can't fix that behind this desk here. Okay? That's done at the state level.
And they control the price.
They have a blank check. They have a blank check, and they just have -- they have the entire six-state region, you know, over a barrel, and it's no different. It's no different across the country. It probably isn't, but that's something that Ms. Healy should be leaning on.
And we actually watched them buying for the price, it's the cheapest price. So why aren't we getting the cheapest price? That was my question to them, so.
And what was your answer, Charlie?
My answer was, we don't, you know, that's your company, EverSource is your company, that's their private, that's what they said to me, so.
Yeah, they don't regulate price there. You know, I know nobody might want to hear this, but there's probably a few people that do. We have a site, a Holtek site, 1,530, what is it?
.35.
.35. And some of that, and there's transmission lines there that EverSource has purchased. And, you know, maybe we should think out of the box a little. Maybe a small nuclear power plant, like they're putting all over, you know, I don't know what kind, I'm not a scientist, but if other nations are doing it, and it's the cleanest form of energy, maybe it needs to be revisited. And by no means am I supporting dumping anything in the ocean, but to actually do due diligence and look at it, even if it's for the, maybe the, for our residents here in town, to get a discount rate. You know, when I sat on this board years ago with Mr. Taviras and Dr. Rashford, he was always on the municipal power plants. I know Hall does it, I think Middleborough does it. You know, maybe when Mr. Cahill comes in and is back to work, that, you know, maybe there's some stuff we should look out, and if it's going like this. But, I mean, we should leave no rock unturned, especially, and I'm, you know, don't write this down, but I'm hearing that the electric rates are going to go up even higher than what they are now. This is just the beginning. So no rocks unturned, we're doing the study, the master plan for that property, and I hope this is, you know, give us the truth. And, you know, I don't even know who's interested or what, but it's something that we need to look at as due diligence, if anything else. And that's it for me on electric. Letters? Old business? Motion?
I make a motion to adjourn, having concluded our business.
Second?
Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for watching, have a nice week.